All right. Good evening. The time is now 6:00 PM on Monday, February 26, 2024. I call the Lexington Select Board to order. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format via the application Zoom, allowing for public participation. All members of the board are present in person. Members of the public can view and participate in the meeting from their device by clicking on the link provided in the meeting agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Further, this evening's meeting is being broadcast live and archived by Lex Media for future on-demand viewing. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. Members of the board are in person tonight. I'm Joe Pato, the board chair, and sitting on my right is Vice Chair Susie Barry. On her right is Jill Hay. Sitting on my left is Doug Lucente, and on his left, Mark Sandin. Joining us from staff is Jim Malloy, the town manager, Kelly Extell, the deputy town manager, and also joining us remotely is Kim Katzenbach, the Select Board Executive Clerk. Tonight's order is a little different from usual. We will begin with an executive session and then come back for public comment and the normal opening portions of our meeting. So for this, this executive session is to discuss the Historical Commission's request for legal representation related to the zoning board of appeals decision on the Hosmer House. I move to enter into executive session under Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21.3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation related to the ZBA decision on the Hosmer House. Further, as chair, I declare that an open meeting discussion may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the town. For second, Ms. Barry?
Second.
Been moved and seconded by roll call. Ms. Hay?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
I'm a yes, Mr. Lucente?
Yes.
And Mr. Sandin?
Yes.
All right, and for the public, we are about to go into executive session. We will be returning to public session at the conclusion of that executive session, but we will be disconnecting from this Zoom session for now, and all members of the public will be leaving the room until we are back in session. See you all soon. All right. Thank you. The board was entered recess as we left the executive session. I am bringing us back to order. We are concluding item number one under the executive session. The board was requested to, requested for funding for a legal counsel for the Historical Commission. During the executive session, the board has chosen not to grant the request from the Historical Commission to fund legal counsel in opposition to the zoning board of appeals decision regarding the Hosmer House. That was the result of that session. We will now move on with our open session. And we've reached the point of public comment. Tonight's meeting is a regular session of the board, and we will be taking general public comments. Before we start open public comments, I would like to remind all participants that we are neighbors and are working together in the best interest of our community. I ask that all comments be made with civility and respect and without casting aspersions or reference to motives. Open public comments are for items not otherwise covered on our agenda. Comments are allowed for up to 10 minutes total. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. Members of the board will neither comment nor respond other than to ask clarifying questions. Remote attendees who have dialed in by telephone should press star nine to be recognized, or if you're using the Zoom application, click on the raise hand button. When you are recognized to speak, please state your name, address, and any relevant board or committee affiliation. Tonight, I'll be using the Zoom timer feature to display a remaining time for our speaker. This is a two-minute countdown timer. When the timer reaches zero, I will interrupt and allow the speaker to just finish their sentence. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment about an item that is not covered elsewhere on tonight's agenda? So, and just to give context, I'd like, if you're in the room, if you could stand up so I can see that you're waiting, and online use the Zoom raise hand feature. I have two people online, and I see three people standing, which will, so if you get in line, we'll get an order. And we will begin with Joelle Gunther online.
All right, I couldn't unmute, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
All right. Joelle Gunther, 35 Wood Cliff Road, precinct three. I have been very troubled by reports that member or members of the Human Rights Committee have expressed views that appear to be in direct conflict with the goals and philosophy of this committee. I would like to express my strong support for those calling for an open discussion around the issue of how personal views, which all are entitled to hold, can affect their participation on the Human Rights Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to the individual at the microphone.
Laura Derby, 1010 Waltham Street. Sorry, I moved there recently. I am in complete agreement, that's exactly why I'm here. I feel that there has been a great deal of discomfort in Lexington because of a person on the Human Rights Commission's speaking, posting very derogatory things, very inflammatory things on Facebook and apparently Instagram, but I don't do Instagram. It has hurt me, it has hurt many people, it has scared many people. I think it's time that you have a code of conduct, I think it's very important you put it on your agenda, have a code of conduct for members of the Human Rights Committee because they're the ones who are supporting human rights.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mickey Guzzi, I'm at 1010 Waltham Street, and I am speaking in the court with, what's her name?
What's her name?
With Laura Derby and with the person who called in, and I'm quite upset by some of the comments that were made. And I would, I want to address them, and I would like you people to address them and to bring our concerns to the people who head up the Human Rights Committee or who select those who are on the Human Rights Committee and to have an open discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go back online to Donit Nettser.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Donit Nettser, 17 John Holter Road in Lexington. I'm joining my fellow neighbors here and also saying that I have great concern over the Human Rights Committee member who has a responsibility in her position to treat all residents respectfully and has not fulfilled that responsibility. I urge committee members to please reconsider her position. I believe that you have the ability, the authority to hire and fire members of the HRC, and this particular individual, apparently we are not naming, but we all know, really is not fit to be in this role. I'm an Israeli-American and Jewish-American and feel very uncomfortable and do not think she represents me. Thank you.
Thank you. Going back to the room.
Hi, my name is Rania Neve. I'm actually living in Bedford, 87 Wilson Road, and I'm here as well to talk about the HRC as a member of the local Jewish committee. Essentially, I want to urge the Select Board to take a stance against hate and destructive language that is coming from that member of the committee. I think that the HRC has shown that it is not capable on its own priorities problem, as we've seen last week in the HRC meeting itself, did not go as expected, I believe. Briefly, I want to read from the HRC website. We remind everybody that the Human Rights Committee in Lexington envisions a community that has as core values freedom from bigotry, hatred, intolerance, disrespect, and destructive conflict among its citizens. And here are some examples of public social media posts that a member, and I will name that member, Mrs. Amber Iqbal, is within my right, I believe, to name her, and a member of this very committee has been sharing these in the last few months. She posted a picture of a woman who was posting, putting up posters in Lexington Center on Mass Ave, posters of kids, adults, elderly who have been kidnapped by Hamas, a terror organization, on October 7th, a spot of an unprovoked attack inside Israel that originated from Gaza, a massacre in which 1,200 people were slaughtered, entire families wiped. I want to remind everybody that women violently raped and executed in that massacre. Children were murdered in cold blood, and 340 people of all ages were kidnapped into terror tunnels of Hamas in Gaza. The word for this, what I just described, is doxing. There's no other word for it, doxing a person of the community. She also made a vile commentary response to a news article about a Jewish organization, Chabad, in Brooklyn, which has no relationship to Israel in that context. The word for this is just antisemitism. She glorified how beautifully Hamas treats terrorists when they're released, and we all know about reports of rape, abuse, and God knows what else in those tunnels. And she wrote, "It isn't within our veins to treat others with kindness and compassion." The word for this is just glorifying terrorism. She equated Israelis, Jews to Nazis. That's antisemitism, with all due respect.
Your time is...
Thank you. I want to close and just say that I want to urge the committee to have a discussion topic in this meeting today around the role of the HRC and the role, the role of the people who are part of that committee. Thank you.
Going back online, Marcy Lidman.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Marcy Lidman, 63 Grant Street, Precinct Five. I've lived here for 42 years. I have never felt any fear or concern about being a Jewish person living in Lexington. This whole incident has caused me to question that. I'm not sure that I am in a town that welcomes me at this point. I, I think Joelle stated it very clearly and very eloquently at the beginning, so I won't repeat it, but I urge the HRC to think about the composition of its membership and whether, as the other speaker said, it can achieve its goals with its current membership. Thank you.
Thank you. Coming back into the room, the next speaker.
My name is Maria Locanti. I live at 4 Rolfe Road in Lexington. I'm here to talk about the proposed liquor store at, I guess, 335 or 355 Lowell Street.
So let me pause for a second. That is on our agenda, so you'll have an opportunity when that comes up.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
Going back online, Kate Weinstein.
Hi, Kate Weinstein, 5 Bowser Road. I would like to state that I support all of the previous statements. I would like to request the Select Board hold a discussion on the role of the Human Rights Committee in our town and the qualifications for service on that committee. Specifically, I'd like to request that an individual who publicly expresses hate toward a minority group, either verbally or on her social media accounts, be disqualified from serving on such committee. There have been an increase of antisemitic graffiti in our schools, in the middle school and the high school since October 7th, that is very concerning. I think Lexington should make it clear that we stand against hate, and if there is a member of a Human Rights Committee in our town that is continuing even after being notified that her statements are hurtful towards members of our community, we should ask that she step down from such a position. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Coming back into the room, and I suspect this will be our last speaker as we will exceed our 10 minutes.
Hello, Dawn McKenna, precinct nine, precinct six, town meeting member, nine Hancock Street resident. And on a completely different note, it has become a tradition over the last several years that on election night, we hold an event at the depot in which all of the community members are invited to, after a very long election season, come and reconnect with neighbors, see the results, and congratulate everybody who chose to run and who did or did not get in and thank them for what they've done. So we will be hosting that. I'm a little bit late in getting out the invitations to the various campaigns, but it is happening. And just as a reminder, because it took me aback for a moment, that the election night is on Tuesday this year, it's traditionally on Monday, but because of the presidential primary, it is on Tuesday night. So it'll be Tuesday night, next Tuesday, the 5th, in the depot from 7:30 till 9:30. It's a drop-in time, come anytime you want, and enjoy some refreshments and connect with people. Thank you.
Thank you. We now run out of our time for...
I would like to ask that you poll the board, as there's only two hands left online, to see if they'd be willing to hear from them as well.
The board want to extend time? Yes.
Yes.
All right, we will go ahead.
Thank you.
I will go online to Ms. Caneely.
Good evening. My name is Trisha Perez Caneely. I live at 4 Brent Road in Lexington, and like the other speakers, this evening, I'm here to speak about my concern about the postings and statements made by a member of the Human Rights Committee. I've had the pleasure and great fortune of growing up in Lexington and being a longstanding member of the Jewish community here, and I keep thinking of the teachings of Hillel when he says, "If I am not for myself, who will be for me? If I am only for myself, what am I? And if not now, when?" And I do believe that the Jewish, the Jewish community here has demonstrated time and time again that we stand up for our neighbors of all faiths, and what we're asking is for the same treatment and respect in return. This committee is supposed to be charged with being a sounding block, a balanced ear, a place where people can come when they're scared and they feel that their human rights and that have been violated or that they have been discriminated against. And unfortunately, like some of my neighbors have said, for the first time in my adult life, I am afraid of being Jewish. And that's especially disconcerting in a town that has a longstanding tradition of not only having one temple, but having at least three different places where Jewish members, Jewish members of our community come and worship. So I ask that the Board of, the Select Board, in their role as the appointee of this committee, go back and review the statements that were made by this individual and recognize that there needs to be a recourse to remove people who are in violation of the stated mission of that committee. I also would ask that it has been incredibly heartwarming, the members of this community who have reached out to my family personally to make sure that we were okay and that we felt safe. We have done that for other people in the community and for asking that other people stand up and do that for the Jewish community as well.
Thank you. And the last speaker online is identified as Jane. If you could introduce yourself by name and address.
Hi, yes, my name is Jane Chen Fullup. I live at 38 Adams Street in Lexington. Like Trish, I grew up here in Lexington and returned to raise my family. I'm speaking for two reasons. One is I want to attest to the fact that I do know Amber, we are friends, and she is a wonderful person in so many regards, and I have really valued her friendship and her presence in this community. I really truly feel that she's added many good things to our lives here. She has added a wonderful perspective, she's very generous, and she, I have to note, after the shooting in Pittsburgh at a synagogue, she did come to Temple Isaiah when there was an event in response to that. I just want to acknowledge that I completely do see the goodness in her, and I don't want this to be about attacking her as a person or her religion or any of that, but she has posted publicly very, very radical antisemitic postings. I've spoken directly with her, this is not a secret to her, and I don't think, even one of the heads, one of the chairs of the Human Rights Committee used the word radical in some of the views, and I just don't think that radical views have a place on Lexington Human Rights Committee. And I don't believe that any Jew in town who has seen her postings could possibly feel comfortable bringing up a concern that relates to their religion, and that is very sad. And I think that she has many really special attributes, but I just don't think that she's appropriate on this committee, and I take issue with the fact that co-chairs have not addressed it.
All right, thank you. So we have now gone through everyone who has raised their hand, and we've run out of time. I do want to, the board cannot deliberate on this issue tonight, it is not on our agenda. We typically don't respond with, except for ask, we're asking any clarification questions, but I'd like to make a clarification statement from the board. First, that the board is committed to making Lexington a welcoming, inclusive, and safe community for everyone, treating all people fairly and fully embracing the unique contributions of all Lexington residents. We reject all forms of intolerance and bigotry, including acts of antisemitism, racism, Islamophobia, homophobia, or other forms of hostility, intimidation, or harassment. Last month, the board received a number of messages about social media posts by a member of the Human Rights Committee, and simultaneously, a formal complaint was lodged with the Human Rights Committee, and they formed an incident response team. That team is in the process of concluding their work. We have scheduled a review of that and of these issues that have been raised by the community for our next meeting on March the 6th, and I want to be clear, our next meeting is Wednesday, March the 6th. We had to delay it for two days to make sure materials were available. So we will have a deliberation at that meeting on general issues that have been raised on this topic. The board, however, cannot discuss this tonight. Right, and I thank all the members of the community for attending and sharing their concerns. We will move now to Select Board announcements and liaison reports. Colleagues, tonight, we have written comments from one member of our packet, in our packet. Are there additional announcements or verbal comments? And I have a few, but we'll start with Ms. Hay.
I was just, well, sampling mine up, but the one that I wanted to urge is that the Transportation Advisory Committee has asked that we put the discussion of the ad hoc transportation report on an agenda, that they really wanted to have that conversation with us, and they would like to be included in that. So I've told them that I think it's coming, but they would like to know a date and would like to be included in that.
Ms. Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Pato. So I want to extend my thanks to Mr. Pato and also to the Concord Fire Department. Last week, Mr. Pato, I'll get there. Last week, Mr. Pato and I attended the Incident Command System FEMA training in preparation for the 250th anniversary next year. It was a full house with all members from Arlington, Lexington, Lincoln, Concord, National Park, and other agencies were there. So we are working very hard to prepare for the 250th, and thank you very much to Concord Fire for providing their training room. We had several members of Lexington staff there, I don't know if you all saw the picture, but there's a photo, and there were a lot of members of staff, so thank you for sending them as well.
Thank you, Ms. Barry. Any other, Mr. Lucente?
Just one clarification in my update. From the center committee, there was a discussion about the Rev Shuttle pickup location being proposed to be moved from in front of the Historical Society Building at the depot over to in front of Seven Depot. That discussion is ongoing, I was told, after the fact that there's some more locations being looked at, so that request may be delayed coming to us.
Thank you, Mr. Lucente. Ms. Sandin?
Yes, I, I did, I did write a liaison report, but submitted it last week, so it didn't make it into this package. So I just wanted to mention to the board that in my role as the Chair of the Hanscom Area Towns Association, I attended a meeting of the Hanscom Field Advisory Commission where the proponents for the North Field, Air, North Airfield Expansion announced that they have released their draft environmental impact report, and that environmental impact report has a timeline of 30 days for comments unless the Select Board or the town manager makes a request for an extension. Now, the proponents have said that they would look favorably on such a request for an extension, when I would think that that's something we should talk about as a board, but I would advise, I would recommend that we ask for an extension to allow ourselves enough time to analyze the report and make any comments that are appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Sandin, and colleagues, I think I can take that action as the chair, just to send in a request for extra time. All right. And the comments I wanted to make was, first, I wanted to follow up on comments I made on February 5th about the school building committee. At this point, the community as a whole should have received a postcard in their, in their mail that introduces you to the Lexington High School project and the website for where information for that project can be found, including a timeline. Just to remind everybody that the anticipated timeline is one that brings us to somewhere near the end of this decade or the beginning of the next for move into a new high school. This is a long process, the one that is very actively engaged at this point, and I want to make sure that the community is aware of the forum that's available on Thursday, March 6th, which will be in parallel with our board meeting, but members of the board will be able to watch the recording.
Is it Thursday, March 7th?
6th.
It's Wednesday.
Wednesday. I said Thursday, I'm sorry, Wednesday, March 6th. Thank you for listening.
Everyone's in love.
Yeah, and, and then today, the, the school building committee meets monthly in full meeting and weekly for subgroups and coordination, and then multiple times during the week for different focus areas. Today, the full group met and reviewed some initial design concepts shared by the architects. They are interesting, they are, they are in the three categories that the MSBA, the Mass School Building Authority, requires, which is a code-compliant repair, a renovation and an extension potentially, and then new construction. There were multiple designs, the, the committee was pleased to see, and I suggested the board take a look at those, that material. One thing of note, that was, there were a couple of items that were raised by members of the committee. One was pointing out that the land area is in short supply, so there were a number of members who were looking at additional designs that were taller and use less footprint of ground, and there was also some concerns expressed by members to make the campus as contained as possible, so there were fewer openings to the public. Architects heard that and will be absorbing and coming back with more designs. But all in all, it's a very encouraging process. Mr. Malloy, do you have a town manager's report tonight?
Very briefly, because last week was a short week, and also a lot of people were on vacation because it was school break. The only thing that I want to say again, only because it's worth repeating, is that we had a bond rating a few weeks ago, and it's, we retained our AAA bond rating. I know that Carolyn Koznoff brought that up a few weeks ago when you signed the bonds, but like I said, it's worth repeating that we retained our AAA bond rating.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. And Ms. Hay?
Just very briefly, and mostly for the board's benefit, but I just wanted to remind you, you should have gotten notice that the, the MMA webinar series for the year is focused on climate, and the kickoff event is with Melissa Hoffa, and it will be March 26th, and registration is open now, so I encourage you all to sign up if you can.
Thank you, Ms. Hay. All right, that brings us to this evening's consent agenda. Tonight, we have eight items on the agenda. First is to approve and sign water and sewer adjustments. Second is to accept Select Board Committee resignations from the trustees of the Public Trust. Third is to approve Select Board Committee appointments to the trustees of the Public Trust. Fourth is to approve Town Manager Committee appointment to the Board of Health. Fifth is to approve Town Manager Committee reappointment to the Commission on Disability. Sixth is to approve Select Board meeting minutes from January 22nd and 5th, and the January 25th Fiscal Financial Summit for FY '25. The seventh item is an application for one-day liquor license for the Armenian International Women's Association at the Lexington Depot Building, 13 East Bo Square. And the last is an application for a one-day liquor license for Galore House, 1720 Mass Ave. Are there any items members wish to consider individually? Are there any items members wish to consider individually? Seeing none, I move the consent agenda items as submitted in the agenda packet. Is that moved and seconded? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. None, it is unanimous, five zero. Brings us to items for individual consideration. Our first item tonight is an all alcohol package store license for Ved Wine and Spirits Incorporated, doing business as Liberty Wine and Spirits at 335 Woburn Street. This will be a hearing, so I open this hearing at 7:02 PM. I'll provide some introductory information and then allow the proponents to make some comments and then ask for public comment. So the application we've received has been submitted to the relevant town staff for review, including building, zoning and health departments, and they have no objections to the liquor license application in relationship to their departments. It's been noted on the application that any required permits or licenses must be obtained prior to opening of the package store. We have in our packet a copy of the Zoning Board of Appeals special permit, allowing a package liquor store to be located on this property with the condition of an approved liquor license from the Select Board. The ZBA special permit was filed with the town clerk on February 15th. And in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 138, legal notices for this hearing were ran in the, in the newspaper, Lexington Minuteman, on February 15th, and the applicant mailed the required notices to a butters. Hours being requested for the package store license are those that the Select Board Alcohol Regulations for Package Stores, unless we were to amend them. Those hours are Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and Sunday, 12:00 noon to 9:00 PM. At this point, I'll turn it over to the proponents for the request for any additional comments. If you come to the microphone, or actually, maybe, since we'll probably ask some questions, if, if you come to the desk and speak into those microphones. Thing to note is that there is a little button underneath the sticker that says Town Office Building, or T O B S. That's it. Green light needs to be on for us to hear you, or for the people on Zoom to hear you.
Good evening, everyone. Andrew Upton, attorney for the applicant. With me is Mahavir Patel, who is the proposed manager of record and the owner and applicant himself. We are proposing a brand new package store in this location. That was a former convenience store that has been essentially empty for the past two years. Mr. Patel is proposing a higher end, more upscale package store specializing in quality wines, craft beer, higher end spirits, and he wants to include wine pairing, wine education, wine tasting as part of the concept. The character and fitness of this applicant is strong. Mr. Patel has been involved in the ownership of five different liquor stores in the past six to seven years. He has been the manager of record. All of his staff is tips trained. He is tips trained. And in all the time that he has been working at or participating in the ownership of these package stores, he's never had a violation of any kind. At this specific location, the Patel family is also the owner of the property. So not only will you have a committed tenant, you will also have a longtime committed landlord and all the benefits of a family working together on this project. The total renovation cost of the building, which we have proposed, is over $200,000. For those of you who know this location, it's quite dated, and you probably know that it failed as a convenience store within the last 18 months or so. The convenience store and the property were previously owned by Mr. Patel's father, but there was a partner with Mr. Patel's father who ran the convenience store and was never willing to invest any money in capital improvements. So finally, Mr. Patel was able to buy him out. The son, who has the experience with the package store, has proposed this concept, and they've committed to spend the money to make this a very nice store. So that carries, covers the character and fitness of the applicant. As far as the public need for a license at the location, as I said, this has been an eyesore for some time. This has been a failing store for years before that. This would be a, a much higher and better use of the property. It is zoned commercial. This use, as it says in the zoning board report, will not create excess traffic, will not create excess noise, will not create excess light pollution. There's adequate space for deliveries. Obviously, the town has a license to put into use for a, for a store like this. There's no churches, schools, or hospitals nearby. And importantly, there's no saturation of stores. I know one of the board's concerns and the ABC's concerns is too many stores too close together. This store would be relatively isolated in this area, as is backed up by the ZBA report. It should be a convenience for the neighborhood, an amenity for the neighborhood. It should be in no way have any negative impacts on the, on the neighborhood. And Mr. Patel and his father have told me that the views of the inhabitants, who were customers of the convenience store, many, many times, they said, will you ever get liquor? When would you have liquor? It would be nice to have a liquor store in this neighborhood. So we believe it would improve the character of the store and the surrounding area. The police chief said it would have no negative impacts on public safety. Mr. Patel is looking to run a store that fits with the character of the neighborhood and the character of the town. He's told me he will have no neon advertising signs, no giant posters in the windows. You know, it will be a low key, friendly, more upscale liquor store. And at this time, he's also looking into getting a side area where he can have charcuterie, crackers, meats and cheeses, sort of friendly amenities to a liquor store. So you've already seen the ZBA report, which was granted, I think, five nothing. We have a strong operator. We have a family business. We have a committed landlord. We have a public need in the area. We have strong substantive approval resulting from the public ZBA process. And we have a lawyer and an applicant glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. I'm going to open it up for us. If you have questions for the applicant, then I'm going to open it up for public comment. Then it'll come back to us for deliberation. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I'll open it now for public. Mr. Sandin?
The only question I have is mainly more for staff is what's, the address that's on the record here is 335 Woburn, but when you look on the town property records, you don't find a 335 Woburn. You only find a 333 Woburn. So I was just wondering if we have the address correct here.
Mr. Pato, I can answer that if you'd like.
Yes.
The, the property itself is known as 333 Woburn Street. It has two units in it, and each unit has their own individual address. So for tax purposes, the whole parcel of the land is 333. ZBA special permits are applied to the whole property. As such, you're going to see the ZBA permit say 333 with the definition inside it that it's for the unit known as 335 for the liquor store.
Thank you, Ms. Patzabek. Seeing no other questions from the board at this time, I now open it for public comment online. Please raise your hand in the room if you would stand at the microphone. And we will begin in the room.
Again, I'm, my name is Maria Lacanti. I live at 4 Roth Road. I'm essentially right around the corner from the store. And I'm glad you spoke about how in disrepair this place has been, because in the 30 something years that I've lived there, nobody's ever done anything to improve that property. However, I do have some questions. So I, I, I hope that the $200,000 that you're talking about is not only to improve the interior, but the exterior as well. And my question would be, does it also include the photo store next door or not? So that's the first question.
So I'm going to stop there. In a hearing, we're here to hear your comments and concerns. It's not a question and answer period for the, no, no, it's okay. I just didn't want to clarify.
Okay.
So you, you can list your questions and they'll be able to respond, but it really isn't a interrogation.
Okay. And my, my other question is, I know that there's only probably a half dozen parking spots there, and you pull right out into a street, and I understand that the chief has deemed this safe and so on and so forth. But I just, I'm concerned about that. 11:00 PM at night, I'm concerned about noise, an additional activity there that goes that late. I don't believe that any of the stores prior to that ever went to 11 o'clock at night. I could be wrong about that, but I don't see how there can't be a little additional noise and light, light pollution. And also, it is very close to, it's next door to a residential property and sort of almost across the street from another residential property. So it's kind of in an interesting situation for a liquor store.
Thank you. And I'll also ask if the applicant wanted to address some of those comments.
We would be glad to. First off, the Patel family has engaged a designer and an architect to do some elevations of the renovation, which are contained right here on Mr. Patel's phone. If we could maybe do a quick walk around, if people want to glance at those. Yeah, I mean, yeah, we're glad. I, I will say that the zoning board said the proposed use is compatible with and complements the surrounding commercial uses in the district. The character of the neighborhood would be positively improved by this proposal. And I will point out that liquor stores typically have a higher per person ticket item as opposed to convenience stores. So where you'd be buying several bottles of wine or one bottle of wine, as opposed to people coming and going, buying Slim Jims and potato chips all day, we think this would have a lower impact on the neighborhood than the previous occupant.
Thank you for the response. So for those online, Mr. Patel is showing us some mockups of what the renovations would look like for the board's benefit. Right, and if you would submit those for our records, that we need to put them in the minutes.
We did submit it to the ZBA as well when we.
I thought I had seen those. All right. Going back to, we'll come back to the board in a second. I see no other members of the public online. If you want to speak, please raise your hand online or stand up, and I'll ask for the board comments right now. Ms. Hay?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on the, the question about the 11:00 PM. I know that that is, you know, the allowable hours for a store, but I thought I had seen somewhere in the applications that your hours actually were only until 10:00 on weekdays and 8:00 on Sundays. Is that right? I can't find it right now, but I thought I had seen that.
He says yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to clear, so you're asking to reduce the hours to eight to 10:00, or is that your planned use?
We're going to be operating from 8:00 to 10:00 PM, and on Sunday, it's from 12:00 to 9:00, which is the allowable.
All right. Mr. LaCente?
So on, on the plan that was submitted with the application, there's a set of stairs that go, I guess it's down. Is there a basement to this building, and what, and is that going to be used as part of the store? Or is that going to be used for storage or not?
Yeah, there is a staircase that goes down to, this is secondary level basement, but we're not going to use that for any storage of alcohol. We are looking, we're talking with the architect to put another use down there, but that's still all preliminary.
Okay, so wouldn't be.
It would be not part of this.
Not part of this plan. Right, thank you very much.
Ms. Hay, Ms. Hay?
Thank you. No, I found the, the hours piece. It's in the ZBA decision. Condition one under the decision is hours of operation, the location will be no longer then Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and Sundays, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, unless further restricted by the Select Board.
Ms. Hay, Mr. Pato, may I add to that?
Please, Ms. Patzabek.
I spoke to the zoning officer, Ms. Krakauer Moore, and she said what they listed in there is what the proponents were indicating their hours of operation were intended to be, not necessarily an imposed, imposed set of hours by the ZBA.
Right, but if we, if we, in our motion specify 10:00 PM, that would be the limit of usable time. All right, and the app indicates they are fine with that limitation?
It also says that a parking plan would be developed, because I know that was the other concern raised by the resident. And is that also, has that been developed? Is that in the works?
It's still in the works, because we're still trying to figure out the limits.
Mr. Pato, please.
Yeah, so that's still in the works. We're still trying to get over the licensing part, and then we're going to sit down with the building commissioner and figure out our parking plan.
Any other questions? And I'm looking back to make sure that I'm not missing any online, nobody else online. Seeing no other comments from the board or from the public, I'm going to close this hearing at 7:17 PM. All right. I'm going to move to approve the application from Ved Wine and Spirits Incorporated, doing business as Liberty Wine and Spirits for an all alcohol package store to be located at 335 Woburn Street for the hours of 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and hours of 12:00 noon to 9:00 PM on Sunday. And after the application has been approved by the ABCC to issue the all alcoholic package store liquor license to Ved Wine and Spirits LLC, doing business as Liberty Wine and Spirits. Ms. Barry, for a second? They moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. None, it is unanimous, five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, board, for your time.
Best of luck.
Thank you. All right. Brings us to our second item, which is an update on town-owned building at 173 Bedford Street. Mr. Malloy, Mr. Cronin, will you lead us through this?
Yes, so the town put out an RFP, as per the board's decision on this. And we advertised both in the Central Register, and we also sent it to all of the leasing agents that were listed in CoStar as representing vacant space in Lexington. We received two bids. Both were from Greatland Realty Partners. One was for 10 McGuire Road, and the other one was for 24 Hartwell Avenue. And essentially, and I had to try to sum up the numbers that we got. On a 10-year lease, whether you do a $4.2 million project with the current HVAC system or you convert it to an electric HVAC system for $6 million, on a 10-year lease, it's much less expensive to renovate the building than it is to lease space. On a five-year, it's not as advantageous if you were to go with an electric HVAC system, as it were, if you were to stay with the current HVAC system, in which case 24 Hartwell would cost more than renovating 173 Bedford, but 10 McGuire costs a little bit less than renovating 173 Bedford. So it's sort of all over the place there. But definitely, the only way that it is beneficial is if we were only leasing space for five years. Once you get to the point of leasing space for 10 years, it is not beneficial to lease space. So, and we looked at both five years and 10 years, because as the board knows, we have, you know, a, a need for swing space for a number of different building projects. The central admin, the library project, and then eventually a town office building project. And so we wanted to look at both so that we could take a look at if we were just leasing space for the time period that the central administration offices might be in the building. What does it look like? And what does it look like if we were leasing space for all of these different swing space needs? So we have a couple of different options, and there may be options out there too. But one would be to renovate 173 Bedford Street with the existing HVAC system, which is how the town meeting warrant is set up right now. So there would be no further action required of the board to modify anything. So there would be no further action required of the board to modify anything at that point. The board could look at 173 Bedford Street, renovating it and converting it to an electric HVAC system. Then we would need to modify the motion for town meeting to account for the extra $1.8 million to convert it to electric HVAC. Now, the third one would be to move forward with any of the lease terms. But what we would then need to do is just not take action at this town meeting, but we would have to have an appropriation either at the fall town meeting this year or next year's annual town meeting to appropriate the funds necessary to fund the lease. So that's basically where all of this is at. I know that Carolyn Koznoff, our assistant town management finance is here as well as Mr. Cronin. And we can try to answer any questions the board has so that we can hopefully make final determination on how to go forward with the town meeting this year.
Mr. Malloy, I just want to see if you could clarify something on the lease terms. If we were to wait until we had a town meeting that appropriated funds for leasing, that would mean we'd have to go back out again and it would be subject to availability at that time and whatever bids, responses we would get.
That's correct.
And so at this point, we wouldn't be able to actually execute on any of these two responses.
Correct.
Thank you. Colleagues, comments or questions? Give you a chance to, to work through. While you're thinking, Ms. Barry?
So I have a question that's somewhat related. Okay, so bear with me on this one. School had been boost 173 Bedford Street. There, we anticipate they'll be there for about four years, correct?
Until the.
Four to six.
Mr. Sandin, let Mr. Cronin answer.
Until the completion of the high school project, if indeed they're being incorporated as part of the high school project.
Okay. At our last meeting when we talked about this, the superintendent said something about if they weren't part of the project, that maybe there would be a building built on the high school grounds for them. Is that something that's being floated out there? Or is that being part of the high school project, a separate building on the high school grounds?
The way I think it's being talked about at the moment is that the central administration be part of the high school project within the high school as opposed to a separate structure.
So I understood her to say if they weren't approved to be within the structure of the high school, that then there was conversation about a building potentially being considered for the high school property. And then they would be moving out of 173. What I'm trying to get at is if they're not approved to be within the high school, where are they going? Because we're anticipating we're gonna need 173.
So if they were not approved to be part of the high school, if that's not the way the school building committee chose to go, then we would need to look at leasing space for them at that point in time, on a permanent basis or a permanent until some other solution was figured out. But right now I can say, Mr. Paddell said, we looked at a bunch of different designs today, the school building committee meeting, and they all had different configurations of how the central administration office might be configured into the school building. Some had it just shown at the end of one of the buildings, other ones it was integrated into the building. So the school building committee is moving in the direction of incorporating the central admin office space into the high school project. There are questions about how the MSBA looks at that, whether or not a separate building is something that, you know, that's not any of their business, that we should build something separately. In any event, we know that 100% of the cost will be covered by the town. It won't be reimbursed by the MSBA. That's something we're aware of.
So who determines if they're going into the high school building? MSBA or us?
The MSBA will have some role there if it's incorporated into the building. Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but because their, their, their role there, since they're funding 25% of the construction costs, some of it is obviously allowed costs, others are not allowed costs. And so they can say, well, it's not an allowed cost, but they could also say, well, you really can't build it in there because you're incorporating an overall building structure HVAC and everything else that we are paying for. So they could do that, but I don't know that that's been their history of doing that.
So their, their history has been to incorporate and allow for a central administrator to be part of that project. While they'll disallow the expenses as part of their reimbursement process, they allow the construction to be simultaneous and, and in line with the rest of the construction project. But we'll have to be very diligent about separating the square footage, the architect time, the OPM time, all of that will be separated.
Okay. All right. That's helpful. Thank you.
Mr. S, Mr. Sandin, Ms. Ms. Hey?
So I was just following up on Ms. Barry's question, which I'm not sure I heard an answer to, which is how long would the central office be in the 173 Bedford Street? And I guess what's going on in my mind is maybe one of the school building committee members could say, but I think Mr. Paddell sent around a new timeline that potentially said it might, move-in might be as late as 2031. Am I understanding that correctly?
Until the final version of which option is selected. If, if we're doing a renovation of the existing building and it's a phased project, that's going to extend out much longer than perhaps a new construction would be on the, on a little separate area of the site. So those two timelines are a little different than each other. One could be a five-year window, one could be a seven-year window. We won't know that until we actually select which option we're gonna proceed with.
So it's possible that, that the central office may need to be in 173 Bedford Street until 2031. It may not be probable, but it is possible. Is that what I'm hearing?
Technically, that's correct.
Okay. So I'm just doing the math, seven years, right? Okay.
Right. I just wanted to point out that should the need for the school department to remain in the building longer, because that's what construction for the relocation and it intersects with other projects, then we would have to lease space for other projects. But we would have needed to lease for two in any case, if we were taking the leasing option.
And, and our current capital plan for library renovation is when?
I believe it's 2028.
Around then, 28 or 29.
That's 29, not 28.
So it essentially assumes the short timeline, which is possible, and we won't know that for a while.
So what happens to a library project if we're not able to do that until 2031?
We'll maintain the building the same as we are doing it today. We'll try to keep the systems up and running as long as possible. Same as we're doing with the high school. We have an end date for the high school. We have worked diligently to keep those systems up and running and putting maintenance dollars and efforts into that building, same as we would do for the, for the library. We'll extend the life of those systems as we have been.
But my understanding was that the reason we picked the date we did was because that's the expected end of life of those systems.
That's correct. And as you know, we are beyond the end of life for buildings like 173, East Lexington, TOB and High School.
So I have a couple other questions maybe for Mr. Malloy. The, when we were having the discussion last time around, we went out to, now I'm forgetting the name of the real estate sort of survey, the CoStar, right? And we came back with a range of, of $2 to $4 million that would cost a lease for five years, something along that lines. With three is the expected middle. These numbers have come in a lot higher than expected. So there's, I guess, two things going on in my mind. One is that 173 Bedford Street is sort of maxes out at 17,000 square feet, if I'm remembering correctly.
The, the top two floors are about 8,500 square feet per floor. So that's 17, there's still about 4,000 square feet on the basement level.
And we'd be using all three levels?
We'll use every square inch.
Okay. Okay. All right. So I'm, I'm just kind of confused why when we're getting feedback that there's sort of, there's a, a range of $25 to $35 to $45, $40 a square foot, that we came in at $45 a square foot. It's, I, I don't know if you have any indication of why we're so much over market from what we were told oh, a month ago.
The only, the only thing I could say is that it depends on how you put together an RFP. I mean, we could lease space and then spend a few million dollars doing renovation to the space. But the way we put out the RFP based on the discussion we had was in move-in condition so that we did, we were either paying a lease or we were paying for renovating space. But we could get lower-priced leased space if we were also spending a few million dollars to do renovations. This was purely renovation versus move-in ready space for a lease.
So you're saying this isn't all in?
This is an all-in, okay. All, all in in the sense that it's the renovation cost. It's not all in when it takes into management fees, heat, electricity and all of that stuff. You have to pay, you know, a portion of the entire building for all of those things, part of your, basically condo fee, whatever you want to call it, and taxes. You pay all of that. Yeah.
Ms. Hey?
And if I read it correctly, it's also all of the wiring for internet and security and all of that, we still have to do. FFNE is not included. And although they have the sort of cool storage space for us, the actual cooling of the storage space is on us as well. Is that correct? Did I read that right? So there's still some work that we would have to do even on top of this, but minimal. I understand that they did most of the fit out. And the, either the 4.2 or the 6.0 plus debt. Does that include the FFNE and the modification for IT security and cool storage?
Yes, I think to all of that. Modification to the interior space for sure. There'll be some cosmetic changes. Security is good. IT space will, we have any area where we would define for that, that's already cooled.
But I mean, is the, the actual wiring, I mean, the things that I just mentioned that are not included in the lease, are those included in our 4.2 or? Thank you. And then the only other question I had was, oh, go ahead.
The only expectation that I have is that they're bringing all the furniture with them.
Yeah.
There's not, we're not supplying new FFNE out of that 4.2 million.
Thank you. Glad to hear that part. The only other question that I had was to, if you could just walk us through a little bit, the distinction between the 4.2 and the 6.0, I know the 6.0 includes all-new, all-electric for the HVAC system. The 4.2, is that doing nothing to the HVAC or is that updating the HVAC with, at in-kind? Or is it able to keep going in its current form?
It is replacing in-kind. I was just looking at a report I was showing Carolyn earlier. We have pieces of equipment that are still in the building from 1968, from 1988 to 2004. Some of those pieces of equipment are running. As you know, the second floor, the top floor is not operational at all. We've got equipment that's older than I am, which is tough. So really painful. So we, we have some really old equipment. We're replacing kind. So if there's a, an air handling unit, we'll replace it with an air handling unit that's gas-fired.
Thank you.
Sadly, the equipment is younger than I. Colleagues, others, Mr. Lucente?
First, I want to thank Mr. Malloy, Mr. Cronin and Ms. Koznoff, everyone who was involved in putting this. Because I do think this is a good question and I think it was, this was insightful information, just so we're not guessing. It's really hard at our table to, you know, draw a dart and guess that we're right. So this gave us a little bit more concrete. And I appreciate the exercise because I know it was, you know, some of the advice we've been given, let's, let's do 173. So seeing this was helpful. There are clearly some advantages and disadvantages here. One advantage I see is some of the, the Hartwell, McGuire ideas, they'd all be on one floor. You know, that seems like a nice plus. They also would be on the outskirts of town, which I don't like as much. I know they don't get a ton of traffic, but they get a fair number of people in and out of that building. To have them a little bit more central would, would be nice. So I, I'm, at this point, given the information, I'm leaning toward abandoning the lease idea, given the dollar amounts that we saw and, you know, giving us now only one decision of, you know, do we do the energy system or not do the energy system that, you know. So I guess where I'm at right now is I think I really need a great argument to say we should spend the money on the lease, seeing it in the numbers.
Mr. Sandin?
So if I could go back to schedule, you know, so if we have five to seven years for the high school to be completed and then we have some sort of staging time before we start doing a library renovation, which if I'm remembering correctly, would take a couple of years. So is that what we're thinking?
I believe we're scheduling that for about 18 months.
Okay. But probably have some time that we need to be down and then up before, you know, to, so there's maybe a year in there to sort of move everybody out and put somebody else in.
We, we, we're trying to incorporate that as part of that 18-month window, move out to move in would be relatively quick. Soon as we move the central office, they're not going to be down for a month. They're going to be, you know, down on a Friday and we're gonna try and put them back up on Monday.
And would we be talking about the same kind of thing for the town office building renovation a couple of years after that? So we're like four plus 11, four plus seven is 11, something like that is what we're looking at. So when I, when I think about this, I, I, I'm reading, reading the room here about leases. And I definitely think, from my perspective, I, I would like to save money in the near term and I would like to have the flexibility. But if, if we're looking at a small delta in terms of costs here, then I start thinking about, along lines of Mr. Lucente here, about maybe we, maybe we ought to be thinking longer term. But if we're gonna be thinking longer term, it seems to me, if, if we're only needing to have a space for central office for four years until the high school moves in, then, then it seems obvious to me to lease. And if we're gonna potentially have five to seven years, then it becomes less obvious to, to lease. And if we're trying to use this property for a very much longer period of time, like 11 or 12 or 13 years, then it starts to say to me that that's about the expected life of a new HVAC system. And so from my perspective, I would like to see if we're going to be investing in this building for the long haul, that we maintain our commitment to our sustainability goals as a town or integrated building design policy goals of being all-electric. I have a hard time building a brand-new fossil fuel system in this world that we're in right now, where we're seeing things accelerate. I would strongly advise if we're investing for the long haul, we should invest for the long haul. We should live to our values. And I would recommend if we're going, if, if the board is moving towards renovation, that we renovate and we live to our values, our sustainability values of this. I haven't heard from the full capital expenditure committee, but I have heard from one member of the capital expenditure committee that they are anticipating making a similar recommendation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Sandin. So my, my, I think I've previously voiced my support for not taking the lease, so doing the renovation work. And I've been vacillating to some extent on to whether or not to use the cheaper equipment in kind versus our electric heating plant systems. The more I think about the likely lifespan that we would be there, the more I'm inclined toward Mr. Sandin's position, say, let's, let's go with electric. I had, had, had some reservations because projecting more than the five to seven years, it wasn't entirely clear. But I think we're definitely going to be doing the library around then. And then there is a pretty good probability that we would have to do the town office building. So we're, we're going to be occupying that space for 10 to 15 years. So I'm projecting delays. So while we've projected the, the cheaper cost for our town meeting, our warrant article did allow us to go for the original anticipated cost. And I would suggest we return to that for town meeting. Ms. Barry?
So I agree with you, Mr. Sandin. So write that down. But anyway, just aside, you can chuckle, it's okay. Slightly related, what do we do with the tent? Um, slightly related, what do we do with the tent?
School administration.
Those, those in the uh. So, select board back.
We haven't really determined that, but one of the things we have talked about is that DPF has a number of um outdoor equipment that they use around the schools and some of our buildings, and it's stored outside right now. And so we've talked about moving it further on, back onto the property and putting storing equipment in there.
But not heating it, right?
But not heating it, no.
Okay.
Just, and not paving any, and we're not talking, we hadn't talked about paving, right?
I mean, it's kind of in an awkward place, and it was put there for fire, so.
Right.
Yeah, if it could get moved someplace easier.
They move further back and just use for storage for now.
Okay, cool, thanks.
So, so, so Ms. Barry, I was thinking you were going to recommend that we use it for our two hundred and fiftieth celebration venue.
Do that?
Or at least the, you know, like, security location, or, you know, like command control. Um, so I am, I am, although I am loathe to call ten to twelve years long haul, I am otherwise in agreement. Um, I think, you know, best-case scenario, this could be ten, eleven years. But I agree that we have to be, um, we have to be mindful of what it could be. Um, and in addition, you know, we always say that we do in fact want to be the employer of choice. We want to take care of our employees, and putting them in a healthy building is also important. So um I would add that voice. Um, and uh I think I, the, the only other thing I was going to say, but it sounds like the board has already sort of moved on to the, you know, renovating one seventy-three, but I was just going to say the other piece about um location that Mr. Lucente said, um, where we do have people going to central office, all the more so when it is the library and when it is the town office building, having it be more centrally located, I think, is important. So I think um for all of those reasons, this does, I'm disappointed because I did get all excited about the fact that we were going to maybe be able to move our affordable housing agenda faster. So I'm, I'm sad to say that, but um I do think it makes sense to move forward with the renovation.
Mr. Lucente?
In the old adage of they don't make it like they used to, um, my twelve-year-old boiler just died at home. So um, things don't last. And you know, so, so if we're talking these same years, it's, you know, we could find ourselves replacing whatever equipment we're putting in again, you know, uh, sometime before we're done using this building. So I would support um the electric. And, and Mr. Curran, if you could just remind me of one item about, were, were there any rebates or, or anything or incentives that we could get for putting the electric in that building?
Oh, there would, there'll be a significant amount of rebates coming as a result of the electric systems we put in place.
And, and would those rebates offset the costs that we're going to be planning for? Or is that built into this cost estimate?
It's not built into this because this is all cash upfront. All of our rebates get sent to uh Carolyn.
Yeah, but it, but it, it's going to theoretically, we'll, we'll get something back. We're not going to get enough, so, so that's, I think.
Given those calculations, what do we mean will be quite yet?
But I think that's an important upside to this, where it looks like it's one point two million more, but it's, I'm sorry, one point eight, no, sorry. One point eight million more, but some of that's not, some of that will come back in rebates, so.
Some of it, we will also try and bring power onto the site that we don't have. I mean, that's, that's a lot more power, new transformer. So there'll be those expenses that we'll, we'll get back.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is he?
I'm just checking whether that was sort of a colloquialism. We're not talking about doing this in cash. Are we talking about borrowing on this?
I, I would, I could.
Okay, just making sure, okay, thank you.
Ms. Sandin? And, and I just uh say to Mr. Lucente, who's having to figure out what to do with his heating system, that I'll put a plug in for uh our sustainability and resilience officer, who is running the Heat Smart Advisor Program. So maybe you could phone a friend and uh they can help you figure out how to transition.
And it's always easier to transition by planning than instead of responding to it's gone. All right, uh, colleagues, I think we've reached a conclusion. Uh, Mr. Malloy, Ms. Exel, we want to make sure the motion is for the full renovation.
Six million dollars, is what I'm hearing.
Six million dollars, that's right.
Good.
All right, very good. Uh, so there's no motion for us tonight. This was just feedback, and you will be able to take your positions on this item later tonight on the warrant. Um, so moving to item number three, which uh is to uh review the Cedar Hill, uh Cedar Street and Hill Street Paul Revere Road intersection. And we have Ross Morrow, the Assistant Town Engineer, online, I believe. Mr. Morrow?
Hello? Hey. Evening, thanks for having me. Uh, just took a minute to get connected to audio there. Um, so I am back to discuss the improvements to the inner street intersections of Cedar Street at Hill Street and Paul Revere Road. Um, these were identified as potential improvements we could do while we were constructing the sidewalk uh that was approved for Cedar Street. Um, I'm going to start off by unfortunately discussing schedule. We've had a setback on some of our right-of-way uh research, and we have less than, than we had previously thought we had. So we have to go back to uh the drawing board for the design of the sidewalk in a few places. Um, with that, we still want to move forward with the design. So we currently have three options that we're looking at. Uh, the first one is just maintain the existing geometry. The second one would be to create T's, more standard T-style intersections with Cedar Street being sort of the, the straight-through movement. Hill Street teeing into Cedar Street and Paul Revere Road and Cedar Street becoming a three-way stop. Or the third option would be to construct a roundabout at Hill Street and have uh through-traffic for this cedar at Paul Revere Road. We would have through-traffic uh directed towards Paul Revere Road and Cedar Street. I'll say westbound or, or the west leg towards the golf course would be under stop control. So on our screen, we have the existing geometry. We did uh some quick pros and cons for each of the options. Uh, existing geometry, obviously no additional construction costs to maintain this. We would just be putting the sidewalk through. Um, there's a large eighteen-inch tree, nice mature tree, right in the middle of the existing triangle island at the top of Hill Street. We could save that. Um, and as of now, it does accommodate large tractor trailers. Uh, that comment gets um more important as we move on with these. But we'll say some of the turning movements, uh, it'll be taking up the entire road. Um, it's, it's not like it can just stay in its lane as it makes all these turns. But because Hill Street splits on either side of the island, it, it allows for more pavement space for the trucks to make the turns. And um, some of the, some of the cons, we've been out, we've discussed uh sightlines in the past. Uh, if you're, for example, stopped at Paul Revere Road, it is very difficult, especially during the um spring, summer, fall seasons, where you have a lot of foliage, to see a stopped vehicle on the Cedar Street Mass Ave side. That's, that's really the most critical sightline. The reason it works now is because we, we have this odd four-way stop. So all the cars are stopped, so even, even if two go at the same time, they're slowly accelerating from a stop. Uh, there's over a hundred and eighty feet between the two Cedar Street stop lines. That's a, a very extended intersection. Um, if you think about typical stop lines, even if you have a four-way intersection, you might have uh, let's say thirty feet of roadway of cross-street, plus um some offsets for crosswalks and stop lines. You're probably looking at sixty feet between stop lines, uh, maybe eighty feet. But here you have a hundred and eighty feet between them. And it is a bit confusing. If you're not used to this area, if you're coming uphill street, you've got the split around the triangle. You've got the, the sort of offset stop lines. The people on Cedar Street are sort of stopping behind you and to the left, and you're looking for other cars. It's, it's just not necessarily as intuitive as a standard intersection would be. Uh, if we want to move on to the next um slide, okay. So this would be if we were to create those more standard-style teed-up intersections. Um, right now, because of the sightlines that we talked about before, we would still uh require a three-way stop at Cedar Street and Paul Revere Road. But to avoid sort of a double stop line situation for Cedar Street, Hill Street would be under stop control, but Cedar Street would have um a continuous through movement through that intersection. So the pros to this, it creates more standard-style intersections, two separate ones. Uh, it does improve the sightlines because um the way the, the intersections are sort of staggered now. And it does accommodate large tractor trailers. And when I say large, I mean uh the large tractor trailers that you'd see doing deliveries for big box stores for, for Stop &amp; Shop and, and so forth. Um, I will say, we don't, I've never seen one coming up here. A lot of consultants like to the design with the uh, we call it the, the what-if mentality. Well, what if somebody hires a moving company and has a large tractor trailer show up at their house? So you know, how does that tractor trailer get there? Um, so for this particular option, to uh make some of the turns, the tractor trailer, you can see the double yellow lines, the center lines. It would have to encroach in the oncoming turn lanes. Generally, on local roads, that's allowed by guidance. So that's why I do say it accommodates the large tractor trailers, but with encroachment into oncoming lanes. Uh, some of the cons to this option, it's obviously additional construction cost to the project. I estimated around two hundred thousand. Um, we'll see where our construction um prices come in for this season. It's obviously been very fluctuating over the past few years. Uh, the sightlines, like I mentioned, it's, it's still somewhat of an issue. But um mostly for someone like, if you're stopped at Paul Revere Road and you're trying to look towards Hill Street, the, the vegetation might still overhang and impair your sightline. But we counter that, like I said, by having the three-way stop in that area. It does require removal of the nice eighteen-inch uh tree right in the, the existing island because we'd be putting our roadway through it at this point. Cedar Street will no longer stop at Hill Street. Um, because like I said, we didn't want to do sort of a double stop line, like have one at Hill Street, and then uh about uh a hundred feet, a hundred fifty feet later, have a second stop. You have, you get cars, they start going, and then they sort of, they don't expect that second stop sign. So it doesn't, it doesn't work well. And then I noted, it's, it is sort of an odd travel path for the vehicles between Hill Street and Paul Revere Road. We have offset intersections like this, you know, all over, all over the area. But it does create this sort of, you're on Hill Street, you're waiting for a gap, you take a right, and then you immediately have to stop at a stop sign. You're, you're not necessarily expecting that. Uh, so that's sort of the review of this option. And if we jump to the next one, so this is the roundabout. Um, I think you'll, you'll start seeing more and more of these, whether they're, they're viable or not. But uh, you know, especially with, I think, the effectiveness and the positive feedback we've got on the one we, we are, we are installing along the battle green. But it's, roundabouts in general are a safer, we, it's generally looked at as a safer alternative to a lot of intersections because you have cars um from all legs, they have to slow down um and, and watch for traffic going around. Um, one of the things we talk about is conflict points, and I have it listed as my first pro. Uh, conflict points would be where vehicles paths would either merge or cross in an intersection. And if you don't mind skipping to the last slide, I have a, a review of that. So this is, this is sort of just a, a quick diagram of the difference between two three-legged intersections. And each of those dots represent either a crossing point or a merging point. And as you can see, the traditional T has nine conflict points, whereas the um, the, the roundabout only has six, and those are merging points as well. Generally, merging is, I'll say, somewhat safer than the conflict points because uh a crossing, obviously, you could have a car going through the intersection at a higher speed, and then, you know, either uh hitting another vehicle in the side or rear-ending them, that, that type of thing. Whereas merging is generally um two vehicles headed in approximately the same direction, so not as severe. Uh, if you want to hop back to that slide number three, so uh, the pros, as I mentioned, um, less conflict points, which in general makes it a, a safer intersection. You have clear sightlines to all the directions. Um, you have different angles at which the cars are approaching. And because where you stop is, is different relative to the other legs, you'll have better sight distance and sightlines in this particular uh option. And then I have listed as uh processes traffic efficiently while still slowing it down. So these are one of, the roundabouts are one of the good options where traffic isn't required to fully stop. If you're approaching an intersection and nobody else is there, like I said, you have these clear sightlines, you can proceed through just as a yield. Uh, whereas, you know, the three-way intersection, if we do a three-way stop uh in the other concept, cars are required to stop at all times. Um, but it deals, it still does slow vehicles down because they're forced to go around the circle. And we designed this circle to be a very low-speed circle. Uh, it, it does have its cons, obviously. Uh, most expensive option, um, again, three hundred thousand is what I had estimated as the additional cost to the project. And that may go up or down depending on how construction costs go this year. Uh, I will note, we did include those numbers, those ex-anticipated costs when we went and got the town meeting approval for the project funding. It does require removal of the additional tree. And large tractor trailers would have to drag their trailers over the, the center island. Um, this would be most notable for, if you're coming downhill street, taking a left onto Cedar Street headed towards Mass Ave, but also for Cedar Street, sort of the, the through movement because you have to go about two-thirds around the roundabout to continue on Cedar Street. The trailer would drag over the center. Uh, we would uh plan for that by either doing a flat center, it would still be raised about three inches, like three to four inches. We call that the truck apron, but the center would be completely mountable, let's say. And uh it would be either, you, we would either use a brick or paver-type surface. Um, or uh one option would be to leave the very center uh more like, if you can look at the concept, if you see where the existing tree is, it's sort of like a bubble circle, like gray bubble circle right in the middle. We could leave that as planted, but have it level with the truck apron so that if a truck does go over it, um, it wouldn't, it wouldn't bump up or down because of the center. And we would use hardy plants that um would be easy to take care of, something like decorative grasses, that type of stuff. So we could have a planted median. But in the off-chance a large truck does try and do one of these movements, then it wouldn't really cause any damage. And lastly, I listed, the way we have it designed right now, there is a potential for a longer pedestrian route through the intersections. If you can imagine, you're coming from Mass Ave on, on Cedar Street, and you're walking along the sidewalk, you do have to walk uphill street, probably an extra if you include the, the size of the circle and the offset to the crosswalk. It could be fifty feet up, um, maybe seventy-five feet up, and then have to cross Hill Street and then come down, back down towards Cedar Street. So it does cause a longer pedestrian route. Uh, I am looking at ways to shorten that. I'll have to talk to the designer and see what we can do. And the other thing I'll mention about that is the right-of-way issues we're running into are on that Cedar Street leg towards Mass Ave, which we'll see where the design leads, but it may, it may cause us to propose the sidewalk on the opposite side of Cedar Street, in which case you'll be more in direct line with the continuation onto the Cedar Street leg towards the golf course. Um, I don't want to commit to anything right now because we're just getting into this, this sort of like redesign of that, of that leg. So those are our three concepts in a nutshell. Um, from an engineering standpoint and then from a transportation design standpoint, I am a big fan of roundabouts. I think they do solve a lot of issues that we, that we sometimes have. This is a smaller application of it um with not as many cars. So all in all, any of the concepts we'd be willing to move forward with, um, you know, just looking for comments on that and uh a direction on which way we want to go with the project.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. Uh, colleagues, I see Mr. Sandin, and then Ms. Barry.
Yes, um, I'm the liaison to the Bicycle Advisory Committee and liaison to the Commission on Disability. And while neither of those groups took a formal vote on these intersections, they're both presented, Ross presented both. Ross presented both of these to both of these organizations. The interesting thing is that the, there was a preference. I should say, both of these organizations did not have strong preferences. They had a preference. So the Bicycle Advisory Committee had a preference for the roundabout option and the Commission on Disability had a preference for the T intersection. And um, but neither took a strong position and both. Organizations said that they were much more interested in the town taking action on other intersections, specifically the Adams and Hancock uh, intersection stuff. That has been presented to the select board. So from their perspective, they'd rather see the town working on these other uh, items. So I, my follow-up question to Mr. Morrow would be. Do you have any crash data uh, for this intersection and what does that indicate in terms of priority in terms of, of, of this intersection being addressed?
So we do have uh, some crash data. It was presented. At this point, uh, two and a half years or so ago, and unfortunately I don't have crash data in the meantime. But we had uh, over a decade worth that we polled and there was only three crashes at this, combined with these two um, intersections. So very low crash rate. Uh, I will say these are what is reported. If there's any sort of rear end accident where people just exchange information and go on their way, I don't have that data, but. From reported accidents, there was only three for over a decade um, worth of, of time that we pulled. And as far as priorities go, this would definitely be a lower priority on our intersection um, list. However, if we're going to do construction work here, we'd like to include it now. It's not. This isn't the type of project we'll be back to do in a few years type of thing. So. Um, I would say if we want to do improvements to the intersections now is the time.
So if I could follow up with my thoughts on this after mentioning what the Commission on Disability. So. As soon as we have roundabouts up first, uh, just say that. I am uh, normally a huge fan of roundabouts and a big supporter of, of the safety aspects of this. I do have. A big problem with the idea that we would be designing a roundabout, that we would be having tractor trailers drag over the middle of it. So I'm, I'm. That, 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 that does not feel right to me. So if we go to the T intersection, if we can sort of look at the T intersection slide here. We uh, just uh, Ms. Katzenbeck, could we go to the T intersection? Yes, whoops, right. So the, the T intersection. There, there's a lot of, there, there's, there's some value to this, but the thing that I have difficulty with. On this is it's got a stop sign in the middle of the thing and I don't believe anybody's actually going to stop there. Or they're going to stop there briefly and roll forward and then stop again in the middle before they take a lap. I'm a little concerned that we're putting signage up that people, it's going to sort of encourage people to ignore that signage. And I don't really, I feel, I don't feel good about that. If we go to the first one, the existing uh, area. Uh, we've been saying that there's some sightline issues and if you drive this area, uh, the sightline issues, at least the ones that I notice. Are associated with the bush around the tree. And so when you get to that intersection and you look, it's the bush that's blocking your view. And if we could somehow other put something that wasn't so high there or just get rid of the bush, we might solve a lot of the, the. The uh, the sightline issues associated with this intersection at very low cost to the town. So I'm in a mode. Where I'm thinking about the town needs to be fiscally conservative and how we're using our resources and, and I would be more. Aligned with keeping the existing thing, saving the money to be put towards some of the higher priority intersections at the time that we need them.
Thank you, Ms. Shandine, Ms. Barry, after that, right? And then Ms. Haye.
Thank you, Ms. Chado. Um, Mr. Morrow, are there any land takings necessary in any of these options?
Yes, uh, there are two in, in this particular view, the uh, two houses to the upper left would have sliver takings along. Along their uh, part of their frontage. Um, and that's more to fit the sidewalk than, that would be to fit the sidewalk, not for intersection improvements. The intersection specific con- concepts, there would be no takings directly because of those.
Okay, um, can we go to the roundabout? So Mr. Morrow, if I'm coming up Hill Street and I'm late for my golf game and. Um, and I'm going to go to Cedar Street, do I ever stop at a stop sign?
No, you would actually have no stop signs between Hill Street and Cedar Street Golf Course.
And if I'm coming in Cedar Street and I'm late for my golf game, I just have to kind of go quickly around the roundabout, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not a fan of a roundabout in this location. I'll tell you why. Um, there's a lot going on in that location. There's sightline issues, there's grid issues, Cedar Street. Of, the Mass End part is up higher than you actually wind up being. Um, and we hear pretty regularly from that neighborhood when it's golf season about people speeding on Cedar Street. Um, and without a stop sign there, I don't, you know. There are some there now that people don't stop at, but that's a whole different issue. Um, and it's pretty condensed in there. And like Mr. Sandin, the T thing doesn't, if you go to the T one, the T intersection doesn't quite do it for me either. Um, because of that weirdness, I wonder if you'd be able to tee up Paul Revere Road better? Cause it's kind of wide there at the end. I don't know. Um. So I'm not a fan of the roundabout because what also struck me is the part about on the T one. Where there's actually stop signs, it says odd travel path for vehicles traveling between Hill Street and Paul Revere. Well, yeah, slow them down. I appreciate that there are safer, safer ways to like design our intersections out there. But at the same time, it seems like some of the, some of them that have come to us recently, if you think about it, are just becoming. Travel through paths. We saw that with the, with the options that came to us for Adams Street and Adams and Hancock and the roundabout and things like that and. We really don't want to be a drive-through community. I know traffic isn't quite what it was pre-COVID. But yeah, put the stop signs in, make people stop. Um, so I, I don't. I don't like the roundabout. I'm not wild about the T. I, I'll be honest, I use this neighborhood as a cut through when I'm coming back from Concord. Um, what's there now kind of works. So I'm not sure that's an answer, but that's where I'm at.
Ms. Haye and then Mr. Shantin.
So I actually was going to say um, that I really wanted to hear from the neighbors and I know we have a few of them. Um, I will. Since we're getting into it, my, my, my gut is to keep things the way they are, um, both for the. There isn't a clear improvement um, for the amount of money it would cost and I don't want to. Do something that's maybe not needed and expensive if we don't know that it's going to work, but I do really want to hear from. The neighbors who were very active in telling us exactly what they needed as the sidewalk. Um, and I want to make sure that we don't slow that down uh, for them. So I, I think they have a pretty good idea of what the needs are. And I'd like to hear that.
Thank you, Ms. Haye, Ms. Shantin.
Thank you. Um, and thanks for laying out these options, Mr. Morrow, and the pros and cons. This is very helpful. Uh, I, I think as far as the roundabout is concerned, my, my biggest concern with this is really a truck going through the, the tree that's there right now is not. Very large, it's not very tall. I think all the branches would be torn off by any truck trying to get through this intersection at any point in time. So I'm not sure that. Would even be worth trying to save a tree because we'll end up killing it. Um. And I just think it's, this area is just too small. I don't, I don't, I'm not feeling the roundabout. I don't mind the T intersection as a three-way stop. I'm a little confused about why the crosswalks don't match where the T intersection is. I don't know if you could explain. In that T intersection, um. Ms. Katzenbeck, sorry, could you go back to the T intersection slide? Is, is there a reason the crosswalk is there and not at where the stop sign would be?
At the time, that's where the existing crosswalk was, so it's where it was placed. But during our final revision, we, I would not leave it there. I would try and get it over by the stop line. The one. The one issue we're dealing with is where it would, it would be um. Relative to the driveway that you can see kind of right, right by the stop line. So. I agree it would be, it would move. It, it wouldn't stay there. We just need to refine that final, that final uh, detail.
Okay, I think with the right, you know, changes, I think the T intersection could work. Um, I'm not, I'm not opposed to keeping it the way it is either, but I, I definitely don't like the roundabout. Thank you.
All right, so we, we are about to hear the public, but um, so why don't we do that and then I'll make my comments. Uh, we'll start with um. Uh, Mr. Gillette, Gillette?
And. Sorry, I had trouble with getting approval to be recorded or something. Um, yeah, we're at one oh three Cedar Street, Walter and Sharon Gillette. And uh, first I want to say thanks for all the effort and thought that's gone into this project. I realize this is a really peculiar intersection. There are no good answers. And uh, it's a, it's a hard problem. So. I, I argue that we should prioritize safety for pedestrians over car throughput. Um, echoing some of the earlier comments, especially given this is a quiet neighborhood street, you know, not a busy boulevard like Bedford Street. I really liked the comment for a few minutes ago, put the stop signs in, make people stop, um, slow people down. So preferences from what's been listed so far, I would say. First premise would be simply keep the existing intersection, but move the crosswalk. Um, the current crosswalk right in the center of everything. Um, I, I took a walk out and took a look at it today. I've lived in the neighborhood for twenty years. And I, I forgot that was there. I've never used it. I never thought to use it because. You're putting yourself in danger of getting killed from four different directions. Um, I would never send my kids out into the middle of an intersection like that. So I would put like, um. As is shown in some other design, like cross sort of halfway across, put. Crosswalks on either end and don't cross in the middle there, too dangerous. Um, second preference would be. The T for Hill Street, but that's, losing that tree is unappealing. The, having people come down Cedar Street as pictured from the right down that hill and flying into the center before they hit a stop sign in the middle. But maybe they stop it, maybe they don't. Um, that inner, that design puzzles me, maybe could work with the stop sign. Placed in a different place, ideally they would just stop coming the way they do. Coming down Cedar, but I understand there are some problems with that approach. Um, I see the rotary as a non-starter. Uh, it has the virtue that it slows all the cars down kind of, but as somebody pointed out, you can. Come down, you can come up Hill Street and sort of fly through on the side, but cars are never required to stop. Um, they can kind of maybe blast through from Hill Street. Um, their drivers are focused in a rotary on the complications of going through rotary and all the different sightlines. And paying less attention to pedestrians. And then, yeah, good, sorry.
If you can finish up your sentence.
Yeah, sorry, I'll, I'll finish up. So and then you got to cut down the tree and there's an attractive patch at the center. Experience with rotary Bedford Hancock is it's a big improvement, but crossing is a pass re and still dicey because of the concerns I mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, going on to Ms. Abear and if, and then we'll come into the room.
Hi, this is Suzanne Abear. I live at ninety-one Hill Street, which is, if you go back to that first slide. The house, uh, the last one on Hill Street. Um, I'm a real strong advocate and I'm here with my spouse for leaving this intersection the way it is. I mean, uh, three accidents in ten years and that doesn't include the last couple of years and we've been living here at least a couple of years and there hasn't been. One that I'm aware of since we've lived here and I'm not sure why we would spend a couple hundred thousand dollars. To work with an intersection that seems to work as it is now. I, as far as a rotary goes, I, I don't even understand that. Um, why we would try to do it in such a condensed area and lose not just the tree, but the whole island that the garden club does such a nice job of maintaining. Which gives this neighborhood a really nice neighborhood feel. The other thing I, I, I don't quite understand is. We haven't really given consideration that there's the conservation easement that runs right between our house and the house next to it on Cedar Street. And with that T where you have that crosswalk, people are not going to cross. They're going to cut right across as they always do, so they can access the conservation as quickly as they can. So I think that would actually make that situation worse for pedestrians, whether you made it the T or whether you made it the rotary. I think the thing that I'm most frustrated about though, and, and this is probably on me. Is that I didn't know that this was actually a project until one of my neighbors told me about it three days ago and our. House is a direct butter to this. And I don't quite understand how we would not at least be notified. And given that the sidewalk was put in on Hill Street a couple of years ago, which is great and we like it and we're all for the sidewalk on Cedar Street. But the idea that I don't know how you're doing that with already just taking up work that was done on sidewalks on Hill Street. Years into that, like how are we redoing that already? I, I don't quite understand that. So I, if, 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 I wish I had known about this much sooner because I would have been very vocal about my opposition. To changing the intersection the moment I knew that there were public meetings about this. I just don't think there's a reason to change this. Thank you.
All right, coming into the room, um, and then the next speaker will be Mr. Bolter online.
Don McKenna, nine Hancock Street, and you may think this is far afield, however. Um, my husband's cousin's family lives right off of Cedar Street. Um, so I know the intersection well. Um, to me, um, and I'm glad some of you made the comments you did. I was sitting here thinking, what problem are we trying to solve? I don't think there's a problem here. I love the new side, the new sidewalk that was put in. Um, but I really got up because you can imagine how angry I was about the statement regarding. Um, the, the rotary or the roundabout as you're calling it. We have already made a mistake of a solution without knowing whether it would work. And I want this board to be aware of what happened Saturday night. All these big trucks that you're talking about, a big truck went into the roundabout coming from Harrington Road. Way too big, could not get through the roundabout in front of my house. Crossed up over onto the um, middle part that was so carefully designed for all these tractor trailers. Go look at how it's destroyed it and imagine if there was plantings there. I've got pictures in case anybody misses it before they fill it back in. But it's a mess and it held up traffic all over the place. Now that's not the case on Cedar Street for sure. I mean, the questions that I wrote down is why are we spending a couple of hundred thousand dollars to fix theirs? There's no speed at this intersection. There's no high volume at this intersection. Um, but it's, you know. I'm, I'm really questioning how, kind of what Susan just said at the end. How are we getting to the point that we're going far beyond the projects that we think are happening? And without really understanding the neighborhoods in which we're doing them. And that has been a pattern for multiple years. And I'm really unhappy about it and I don't know how we fix it, but one of the ways we fix it is with the good comments all of you made. And not make another mistake at this intersection. Um, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. Online, Mr. Bolter?
Hi, thank you um, for listening. Uh, my name is Jeff Bolter. I live at sixty-seven Cedar Street. I'm Suzanne's neighbor. In the diagram there, I'm the one um, right in the middle at the top. Um, so we have a very good perspective on this intersection. And I've been um, asking um, Ross and, and other folks in the town to take a look at this intersection because. You know, we, we live right next to it and hear the problems that it produces uh, all day long. Like, you know, I, any, any time of day I can hear uh. Cars honking at each other because they don't understand the intersection or they're not sure which way to go first. Or, you know, people getting swerved at. Um, it, it's maybe not a lot of reported in, in. Accidents in the intersection, but it, it's one waiting to happen. I mean, it, it just cars are coming in different directions and people just don't know which way to go. Um, you know, I've reviewed the different proposals here. And, you know, while I'm, you know, philosoph- uh, philosophy uh, wise, uh, in approval of roundabouts, I don't think this one solves the problem. I think with the sidewalk, we emphasize a safer way for pedestrians to move across and, and the roundabout does not do that. It provides. Uh, it will force people to go uphill street and then down, which people are just going to ignore. They're going to end up running across the, the rotary, which is. Uh, very unsafe. If the sidewalk does get moved to the south, then uh, on the southern side of the street, then that will help. Um, but I'm very concerned about the intersection and how it's configured today. Um, you know, I have small children that um, that are there and, and. You know, trying to cross the street and listening to the horns all day. Um, it's, it's really not sustainable thing. When I first moved here fifteen. Um, it's, it's really not sustainable thing. When I first moved here fifteen years ago, there were, I think there were two um, stop signs and now there are four, but I'm not sure that's actually helped. It just seems to be making it more confusing and um, and harder for cars to navigate that. And while I hear a lot about, you know, golf traffic, the cars I see through are not necessarily golf, they're neighbors, you know, in minivans and shuffling kids between things and just trying to get there without um, stopping.
Thank you, Mr. Bolter. Uh, going to Ms. Staggerwall online.
Hello, um, is that audible?
Yes, you are.
Great, um, I'm Jesse Staggerwald. I'm at one forty-three Cedar Street. I just will keep it short. Thank you so much for looking closely at this intersection in our neighborhood. Um, I'm with the people in our neighborhood who desperately wanted a sidewalk. We're really grateful. I appreciate the engineering department taking a close look at the intersection for the reason that Suzanne A. Bear mentioned, which is it can be frustrating if you do a project and then have to undo or accommodate things shortly thereafter, but from my perspective, the work you've done is helpful. You've shown us all the options. My preference, strong preference is to leave the intersection as it is. Um, spend the money on other intersections. We as residents of this neighborhood have to drive through all the other intersections in town too. Um, but if you could keep the part where you keep the tree, improve the signage, repaint the crosswalk so it's as safe as possible to interact with the space. I think Mr. LaCenti had a good point about, I think it was some about the bush that's there, maybe it was Mr. Sandin. Um, I think Ms. Barry has it right that we are not trying to be a cut through. We're not trying to change the traffic pattern. We're trying to keep the people who live here safe when they walk to town um, or to the businesses nearby. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the last speaker online, Ms. Neely.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
All right, um, well, as you know, I've been.
Ms. Neely, could you introduce yourself by name and address?
I'm sorry, this is Justine Neely, nineteen Bellflower Street. And I really appreciate the select board, um, considering this for so many years. We started this um, process eight years ago, so it's been a long time coming in the desire for a safe way for children and ourselves to get to town. And um, the the sidewalk led to thinking about the intersection, how you could safely cross this intersection where people do roll through the stop signs um, regularly. They're, they're more like yields. So um, I appreciate, as Jesse said, looking at the sidewalk and seeing what can be done while we are uh, putting in the sidewalk. I'm sorry, looking at the intersection while we're. Um, and I think we, as we said, to look at pedestrian safety, I would love to see where the sidewalks could be on this original um, picture, how it could be improved. Um, because I think that could give information to this discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Neely. Right. Colleagues, um, so I didn't give my comments, but I, I think they are roughly the consensus. Um, I, I think given the, the challenges here, leaving the geometry configuration as is and putting in the new sidewalk is as far as we should go. And um, and then not spend the extra funds on redoing the intersection. Uh, Mr. Moreau, have you heard everything you need for tonight?
Um, yeah, this was great feedback. I think there is a lot of differing opinions and some that have changed over the years as well. Um, I did request an, an official vote, so we have a direction, but um.
No, I'm happy to do that. I'm just looking back.
Okay.
So colleagues, I'm gonna move that we approve the design for the intersection improvements to be the, the existing triangle configuration. So there's, Ms. Barry.
Second.
Move the second at all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. None is five zero unanimous. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Um, we've been at this for two and a half hours. The board need a moment or, so let's take a, a five-minute recess and we will be back here. And in the meantime, if our planning board colleagues and planning department can get ready, we'll, we'll start immediately when we're all back. Do we have a dinner break?
Do you want to start from the top?
Yeah, we're, we're coming out of recess and we're going immediately into the town meeting articles and we're going to planning.
Uh, okay, so uh, we're bringing uh, forward articles forty-seven through fifty-two. Uh, and we opened our public hearings on all of those articles on February seventh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, article forty-seven, which is regarding signs, that one, the public hearing is still open on that. Uh, there's still a number of questions, including some Ms. McCabe received today. We are close to closing that one and we hope to close it uh, on our meeting this coming Wednesday on the twenty-eighth. Um, the public hearings for the other articles have all been closed. Uh, and the board still needs to vote on all of the articles. Uh, and with that, I will turn it over to Ms. McCabe.
Thank you. I'm Abby McCabe, the planning director, and I think Kim's getting ready to um, share the screen. So there are six um, articles from the planning board. Um, article forty-seven is relative to the sign bylaw amendments. Signs are section five point two of the zoning bylaw. Um, this is a comprehend, this article is a comprehensive um, update to the sign section. We haven't had a holistic approach to this um, section in, in many years. The primary purpose of these amendments is to help streamline the sign permit process. Just like clear regulations to help support local businesses and to also protect the um, visual um, environment for residents and visitors. And then also to comply with current case law. Over the last several years, has been um, the attorney general as well as the Supreme Court has had more signage cases. Um, and they've been more strict on municipalities regulating signs and to be content-free regulations, whereas not regulating what's on the sign, but limiting your zoning to only size, location, lighting and placement. So that's why we're taking this comprehensive approach and making these amendments that you'll see tonight. Um, the um, the first slide that we, the first um, kind of major amendment of this article is about principal wall signs. This is one of the main reasons we felt it was important to bring the zoning forward is because um, our current zoning only allows a nine-square-foot sign area for um, principal wall signs. So oftentimes when we have new businesses coming in, they're looking for relief. They typically need a sign bigger than that. So they'll have to go to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit, which is usually about uh, it's a three-month process to kind of putting your application together and then there's an appeal um, period. So this article um, allows larger principal wall signs and allows more wall signs. This article proposes amending the sign um, for each business establishment to be based on the frontage of your business. So one square foot times one linear foot of your facade. So if you have a thirty, if your business is thirty feet um, in length, then you get a thirty-foot square area. So we thought it made sense to tie it to the size of your facade, but also to settle a maximum limit for even if something has a large facade, that the maximum size was a hundred square feet. And also allow the second principal sign if, if the business has, is sprinting on a corner lot facing another street or facing a bike path or municipal lot, they're allowed to have a second wall sign. This article also allows um, projecting signs by right without having to go to this um, special permit um, with the ZBA like they do now in most cases, except for in the center. Um, it adds a new provision for awning signs as um, allowing, you know, makes clear that banners are allowed on a temporary basis with a maximum size of fifteen square feet. And it allows portable signs with regulations on size and, and placement. Those are those A-frame or sandwich word signs on private property. Next slide, please. This article, it maintains um, in the sign bylaw right now that illumination of your sign is only from exterior. So usually the um, gooseneck lights that you see, internal illumination is only allowed and continues to only be allowed by special permit. But the amendment says that any of the standing signs have to be lit from above to be downlit, rather than we'll see the ones on the ground going up. And the reason for that is to keep light, keep the light source shielded, so that's not going on to other properties or into the sky. Next slide. Um, the standing signs, these are the signs that are um, you know, not attached to a building, usually directly on, on the land. Right now, they're only allowed in the CM and the CRO zoning district. Um, we're proposing to allow larger um, in the CM and CR than is allowed today. Going up to a hundred square feet from the existing fifty square feet in the area and going up to six feet in height, whereas today it's five feet tall. And then this proposal also includes allowing the standing signs in all other business districts um, at a smaller scale, a maximum size of nine square feet in the center, five feet tall. And then twenty square feet and five feet tall in the other, in all other business districts. And one per lot. The idea there is if there's a multi-tended building, they're hopefully be able to all fit on the one twenty-square-foot sign. And from comparison, there's on the right in that photo, uh, Bedford Street, that's twenty-one square feet. And then also allows um, non, if a business or or you such as a church is in a residential district, they'll be allowed a fifteen-square-foot um, standing sign. Then um, we also in our existing bylaw have a whole section on residential signs, which has kind of become the most discussed point of this um, change and, and, and really the reason we're been inspired to make these changes is because of these court cases about not regulating the content. Um, so um, as proposed right now, it's the maximum sign area on a, for permanent signs on a residential lot is thirty square feet. Um, you can have up to two per lot. Um, that's five feet in height. So essentially you could have two signs. And the idea there for the permanent signs is we're really thinking of properties such as Cataton Woods or Avalon where they have like an identification signage. Um, and in the draft right now, we have no limit on the um, smaller temporary signs, which are essentially like the lawn signs. Um, we've gotten a lot of questions about those. Um, so in this draft and the planning board will talk about this more on Wednesday night. Um, right now it um, doesn't have a limit on the number of those smaller size um, temporary signs for residential properties. Um, just some examples of um, different sizes. Um, and some example of the downlit um, standing sign. Next slide. Um, so in summary, this um, this amendment, it doesn't change anything with the historical historic district commission's approval. Any exterior changes would still need to go the, to the um, historic district commission. We still have in there the provision if a business or, you know, a sign is looking for more relief than what's allowed, they would have to go to the ZBA for a special permit. But we've added in there to make it more clear that during a planning board site plan review, they can submit a sign package and the planning board included in their site plan review could um, could grant relief at that time instead of having to do the ZBA addition. Um, and then if there's any sign that doesn't comply now, that sign can continue, but if it's being enlarged or relocated, it would have to come into compliance with the, this amendment once adopted.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions on signs? Mr. LaCenti, Mr. Sandin and then Ms. LaCenti.
Thank you. I, I just have a back, back to the one foot high by the width of the building. So if I had a forty-foot uh, business and I have one foot times forty is forty square feet, is that what we're saying is the size?
Yes.
Does that mean that I can put an eight-foot tall by five-foot wide sign on the front of my building?
Yes, cuz we um, we have it based on area without saying, um, I think we used to limit the, only three feet in height, but now we've changed it in case if someone wanted to do more of a square rather than rectangular.
So I could do a sixteen-foot high sign by two and a half feet wide. Have we thought about sort of this thing where it's a sign could be much taller than the front of the buil, uh, story of a building?
Uh, we do have a limit that it can't go above the um, roof line.
So I'm, I'm, I guess I'm a little I'm, I'm hesitant about this idea that we can have some very tall signs that might be even taller than the right entrance.
Uh, Ms. Barry? This was something I thought.
Uh, thank you. Just a question about, um, well, two questions. One is on the, the sign size. The example of the Avalon sign that was on page seven. I'm just using, this is just some example, but is the surface of the posts, Ms. Ms. Katzbeck, could you go to to the seventh page? Is the twenty-five, it's twenty-five square foot, is the post part of the sign calculation?
No.
For purposes of it.
No, we have, we did create a new definition of sign area and it excludes the support structure.
Okay. Cuz in the, in this particular one, the support structures are quite large. Just trying to imagine large structures. You know, how, what is the structure? Um, you know, people may get elaborate on that. Just to make the science stand up, just, just putting it out there as a question, I guess, more than anything to get an understanding. Second question is on temporary signs. The current limit is two. And the current setback is I want to say it's five feet and ten feet? Is that, is the ten feet going away? Or is that staying?
I think it goes away, but then in our um, general regulations section, we had something about no signs being placed to obstruct traffic since sightlines, which that was the original intent of the ten feet.
Okay, is, is it, is there some case law on why we wouldn't want to keep the ten feet restriction? And the reason I, I ask that is, and I know some folks don't have a ten-foot setback in their yard, so that creates a problem for some, but it, it just changes um, drastically changes the look when the signs are like right on the edge of the street, even if it doesn't create a sightline problem, just it makes it look a little less put together. I'm not, I'm not a huge fan of having no limit on the number of temporary signs. Um, I've seen this in other communities and it's pretty dramatic um, looking when you see it, but other than that, I think there's, there's a lot of great things that happened to um, in this bylaw change. I think there's a lot of positives here, just have those couple concerns. Thank you.
Ms. Barry?
Yes, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Katow. Uh, Ms. Katzbeck, you go to the, the slide about lighting? So you mentioned at the very end that existing signs would be compliant unless, you said there were two things.
Um, they can remain, but then if they're going to be enlarged or relocated. So if, if they came in for a new um, a new sign permit to increase what they have there or actually moving it. So we do have a lot in town now where they have the ground mounted lights um, facing up. So those could remain until they, so they'll probably be there for a long time, but eventually at some point when they come in for a new sign permit, if they were gonna.
Yeah, I, I guess my question is in regards to lighting. So if you have a sign and you're just like, oh, we got a new logo, I'm gonna put up a new sign, same size, same place, ground mounted lights. They were okay, or they have to change the lighting?
No, we, you know, removal and replacement of the existing like sign face, that was a discussion of the board. Um, that could be done without having to um, change a lighting.
Okay. So does this grandfather in signs that don't have lighting that might want to be lit later or? So if there's a sign out there now that's not lit?
Then I think then when they do their lighting, it would have to comply.
Okay.
Any other, Ms. Ms. Hey? Any other, Ms. Ms. Hey?
So I just wanna go back to the, the structural support piece on um slide seven. I, I am a little concerned. If you look at both of those examples. Those are some pretty, the Katahdan and the Avalon, those are some significant. Size support. Um, and I'm not. I guess I'm not opining directly about what I think the right answer is, but I would like the board to at least have considered. Whether or not they want to have any kind of a limit on that. Because you could envision something which becomes a much, much larger structure and just has the compliant. Size of the sign itself, but the structure is, is somewhat overbearing for a, a um, a particular lot. Um, and maybe it's just a proportional answer, I don't know. Um, and then my only other question, I just wanted to understand on the temporary banner sign, not temporary, um awning signs, sorry. Um, that's the only place where I saw something about the size of lettering as a limitation. Can you just talk about that a little bit?
Right, so um, we, this allows sixteen inches in lettering, um. You know, I looked at a few others that allowed li- um awning signs and other um communities. And that was about average, you know, something that's big enough that can be seen, but not, not too big. Um, cuz in the past, we've had wall sign height letters to be three feet. So this is about half of what we've allowed in the past.
Okay, I ge- I guess I'm just not entirely. I guess I don't totally understand why, but um I will defer to your expertise. If you tell me that this is a more standard practice for awning sizes to, to limit the, the lettering i- differently. I guess I just. Unless there's something else, I, I guess I just am not entirely sure what I'm missing here.
I s- I see we have um economic development director here, Ms. Ayers here.
Ms. Ayers, if you'd like to uh comment?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Pato. So when we were looking at uh different size and signs, there were a lot of different signs. And especially awning signs have been uh in discussion in the recent uh example like Fierillas. And one of the things was how many uh structures in front of a, a business could have signage with lettering on it. And that was discussed extensively. So we, we didn't want to limit having, uh, having no lettering at all on the awnings. But at the same time, give a size that would not compete with the original signage on, on the building. So we definitely want to increase people to put signage um on their buildings rather than on the awning. So as I said, we, we didn't want to limit signage, but at the same time, limit, limiting the lettering would make. More sense to have a, have a much more, you know, effective way of using signage in front of um, you know, uh, business, if that helps.
It does, thank you. I hadn't really thought about the, you know, um duality effect. So that, that is helpful. I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Sandin?
So. We live in a changing technological world and um. Start to see signs in other communities where the signs aren't really what you would call a sign. They're more a computer display or an LED display or a billboard or something along that. What's, how would that be treated under this? Are we, are we allowing um? You know, sort of LED, you know, display signs here, things that can change. Uh, and then the illumination, the same thing is happening in terms of. Now you can buy light bulbs that change their, their uh, their colors, you know, dramatically. And do we have any thought about that in these considerations? Are we thinking forward to what technology enables?
We do have in our prohibited section, um, it prohibits um. Signs that incorporate, you know, flashing, moving or intermittent illumination. But we couldn't add in there like the digital displays. I think that's what that section was intended to mean.
So. Maybe we need to. Uh, 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 maybe, I, I can't tell from what you're saying verbally, but I think it would be helpful to be clear whether we're. Enabling something that can change or not, and whether we're enabling display or not. I think that's a reasonable, we should be sure what, what the answer is to that.
Ms. Barry, Ms. Barry?
Um, I just have another question on the portable signs on slide four, maybe? So do we currently allow portable signs? I didn't think we did.
No, we don't. So this is a new provision to allow um the portable signs on private property.
So in the center, where is the private property? We went through this with the streetscape, like what is sidewalk and what is private property? Because right now we don't, correct Ms. Axel, we don't allow them?
They, they have to do a permit through the town mayor's office.
Right.
And there's, you know, they can, there's right outside people's doors, there's some section that people can use that. Is their private property, but essentially it's all public.
Okay. My, my concern in certain places would be if there's not, you know, enough pedestrian with, to travel with, if a bunch of these started popping up.
And to follow Ms. Barry's question, there's no limit to the number of these signs?
Um, let me check. I think we said. One per lot, I think, or per establishment. Um, also with provisions on um. We say for the new portable sign sections, it says uh must be fully located on private property. Um, cannot obstruct a walkway, must provide at least four feet of clearance for pedestrians, not to exceed six square feet in area. Or uh maximum height of four feet and. Are installed securely not to blow over, but we could, I realize now we don't have a limit on one per lot or, or one per business. So we should.
Yeah, I'd recommend one per business, not per lot.
Okay.
There are several bus- business, sorry, several buildings that have multiple businesses and that could become an encumbrance.
But the encumbrance portion, I think, has to be addressed as encumbrance on interference as opposed to a number. Right, and? Uh, I'm saying that this is going to be, as you've said, this has generated the most interest. I think we all have to relate to it. Um, I will remind my colleagues that we are running quite late and this is only one of too many um to discuss tonight. Uh, but I, I, I can't prevent myself from saying, I do appreciate that you looked at private property stand, um temporary stand. Uh, standing signs, not standing signs, the uh. Portable signs, yard signs. Uh, because if you look today, when we have contested elections in a lot of, of races. While it can become unattractive, it is still the only way for someone to actually express their political view. And exercise their speech across the board on all of the races. Two signs, which is our current limitation, clearly doesn't work for this year's election. So I think it, and, and if you look around town, you'll see that there's quite a few people who are scofflaws at the moment and probably have no idea that they are. So I appreciate that you are adjusting this to allow for that free expression. I'll also point out that, you know, people are concerned about sidelines and like, but often that verd, that grass um is not private property. That's town land and you're not supposed to put signs there at all. It's only on your property that you should be putting signs. So let's um, are there any further comments?
Just one second. There's so much going on here with the signs. I. The intent here is very good and I think, again, I said this, but there's a lot of good here that's needed to be done for a long time. And this is a little bit of ripping off the Band-Aid to get it done, which I think I admire. I hope the town meeting realizes all the good and we don't get, you know. Sidetracked by everybody has their one opinion on one piece of this and everybody, everybody has seen signs and everybody has. Maybe had a sign on their front lawn or in their business, you know, it's, it's feels very um. Close to people's hearts, I guess, and, and I, you know, hopefully we all can come to some happy middle ground on this. Um, you know, cuz I disagree with Mr. Pato respectfully about the number of signs. I think it can get out of control and some control on it would be better than nothing. And I think the setback is still very, you know, important as an element. Will I not support the whole bylaw if those aren't in it? I don't know, but I, but probably still support it. I just think those things are gonna, you know, get, get us um tied up in town meeting. And hopefully the moderator has a whole evening on just article, this one article.
All right, with that comment, I think we can move to the next. Cuz we don't have one evening.
No. Okay, thank you. That, um, we'll take that, all those comments back to the planning board for Wednesday night. That, the signs has been the longest discussed item before the planning board as well. Um, so article forty-eight, this is um amendments to the short-term rental section in the bylaw. Um, the short-term rental section six point ten, that was first approved in twenty twenty. So now that we've had um a few years, you know, three full years of having this um bylaw in place. We um, you know, staffs, particularly in the building and zoning department, had brought this to our attention. Some, you know, minor modifications now that we've had three years' experience of what we wanna um. You know, and what we see as improvements to help limit the intensity on um neighbors and the butters to help mitigate the short-term rentals. Um, and also increase safety for guests. So, so in the current bylaw, uh, right now, um, you can either rent out a whole um dwelling, so your whole house. In, or up to three individual bedrooms for short-term um rentals. So if you have a four or five bedroom house, you can rent out three of them to separate parties. You can also con- currently at the same time, you could also have rooming units, which are similar, except for they're not on a short-term basis. They're usually will, you know, you could rent out a room long-term. And in our bylaw now, we do have a limit on outdoor um parking spaces of four vehicles. Um, you can apply for more with a special permit, but there's nothing specific in the short-term rentals section of the bylaw. Next slide, please. Um, so the, the changes, there's kind of four major changes with this article. It's to add um, to restrict the number of rooms that can be rented. You can either rent out the whole dwelling for short-term or up to um two individual um bedrooms to um. To a party or limit to two adult guests per bedroom. There's um an added provision that prevents um combining short-term rentals with rooming units. We also added in the provision that no more than four vehicles um outdoor, outdoors can be parked um for short-term rentals. And then we set the maximum limit of the number of, of guests that can be in the short-term rental. So it's either maximum of ten total guests or two adult guests per bedroom, whichever is fewer. Um, because over the years, we've had, um, over the last couple of years, we've had complaints about. Um, there could be up to six guests coming in and out at different times. Um, and that, uh, we heard from some of the neighbors about the high turnover with those. Um, we're still maintaining our building and code, fire code, safety inspections. But this article does um remove the requirement for keeping a, a detailed log of guests. That was inserted in um, in the bylaw that was adopted in twenty twenty. And really we believe the me, the real reasons for that was for contact tracing if there was, um, you know, it was during the pandemic. Um, however, since we've, you know, so this article recommends removing that cuz we no longer are doing contact tracing. So we didn't feel that was enough information to include in the zoning. Next slide. And then um, the last major change in this article um is adding a prohibition to. Um, not allow the short-term rental for multi-family developments. This is something that came up at the last um planning board meeting during the hearing. Um, the planning board still has to review the final language on, on Wednesday night. But since the last meeting, we did add a provision that um multi-family developments such as condos can't um be used as short-term uh rentals. Next slide, please. Oh, that's it for the short-term rental section. If you have any questions?
Colleagues, any questions or comments? Nope. Move on to.
Mr. Sandin?
So I'm, I'm kind of stuck on this multi-family dwelling um thing. So I'm trying to figure out what problem we're solving here. So if, if there's, if, if I own a condo in a, in a building that has four or five condos, we're saying. That I wouldn't be able to rent it out on, on Airbnb, is that what we're saying?
Yes, and the idea there is what we talked about with the board was. The new um multi-family housing and the new zoning that we worked hard for and, you know, adopted last year. We like to make sure these stay in the housing stock for people to live in and not just become investment properties. To be rented out for profit at a much higher turn, turnover.
Okay. And, and if I'm understanding correctly. Um, this restriction on no more than two individual bedrooms can be rented to a single party. That's just, that's not, if some, somebody has a house with five bedrooms, they can rent that house with five bedrooms to one, one renter.
Right, they can rent out the whole house. The limitation was about the individual bedrooms.
All right, I think we can move on.
Article forty-nine, that's um amendments to the permitted uses and development standard section of the bylaw. Um, with that, we have some amendments. This article proposes updating um definitions. Right now, um, our zoning has two different definitions for restaurants and fast food establishments. Which focus um on how that food is provided to customers. It's either, it's a restaurant right now if you're being served by waitstaff, but if it's self-service, that's considered fast food. But this article amends um the definition of restaurant by kind of combining the both. By saying an establishment whose principal business is the sale of foods and beverages for consumption on premises. Um, without distinguishing how that food got to them. Um, and it amends, it deletes the existing um definition for fast food. So fast food establishments will now be considered a restaurant. And the reason for this change is just over the last several years, there's been, you know, major industry changes where we're seeing a lot more. Places have come to us and they sort of more fit into that fast food definition. There's a lot of places where you may order at a counter and then sit down, you're consuming the food on the premises. But there's um, a lot less businesses with the um. Waitstaff service. Um, so going forward with this article, cafes and cafeterias or food pubs would be considered a restaurant. Um, also something like a tea house where it's tea or like a smoothie place that would now fit into the restaurant definition. This article also creates a new um definition for craft beverage establishment. So this um, this definition is a, an establishment licensed to manufacture um alcoholic beverages. Under mass general laws at the fifteen thousand barrels limitation um on site per year. Which is ki- kind of the industry standard for the smaller venues for like micro breweries. Um, so this creates that new um definition that would allow something like a micro brewery. Or a small um, like wa- small winery or a small cidery. Next slide. So with the new definitions, we're also um updating the table of uses, saying where these um uses can go. And the change here for restaurants is to allow, to expand restaurants to be allowed in three new zoning districts. The CN, the CS and the CLO uh by special permit. Those are some of our smaller business districts scattered throughout town. But this article proposes um allowing them in all places that restaurants would be allowed. Next slide. Um, this, this um action here, this article also allows um takeout food service at all places, in all business zoning districts where restaurants are. Currently, the takeout food service is not allowed in the CS, the CLO and the CSX. But if we're changing the action before to allow restaurants in these zones, we think it's important to have takeout service, which is not drive-through. Drive-throughs are super prohibited, but for example, like Grubhub or where you pick up food. And craft beverage establishments, that new definition we created, the proposal is to allow them in all business districts by special permit, except for by right in the CRO and the CM, which is the Hartwell and Hayden Ave area, without a special permit. Next slide, please. And then the last change with this article is to allow a private postal service in the CB district in the center. And that's not a distribution center, but it's a small, it's a retail venue that has an accessory mailing service, like a Walgreens that may have a mailing service. That was a request of the center committee, so we've incorporated that in this article. And then I think there's one more slide. So really, what this article is doing is, we took a careful look at, you know, planning and zoning and building. And economic development staff took a look at what we've experienced, at questions of new businesses coming in. And this article proposes modernizing our definitions and our uses to match more recent practices for businesses, especially in the eating and drinking venues. Encourages uses that serve as destinations can make Lexington more economically competitive. And we think complements the current businesses and what we've heard from some of the residents during recent outreach efforts.
Thank you. So I, I do have one question. In the redefinition of fast food, the, the select board, its liquor licensing regulations does reference fast foods because we don't license restaurants that are fast food. And I think we either have to insert our own definition or revisit the question. But right now, we reference, I think, the zoning definition, so we will need to make a contemporaneous change.
Right, I think you, if there's no time in concern, you might wanna, you know, I'd recommend waiting to, the zoning is, whatever zoning is adopted at town meeting and then taking a look at to make sure it matches. Because the zoning, if this article passes, there's no more fast-food definition, so it would just fall to restaurant.
Right, and then, so we would have to revisit whether or not we want to retain that category as excluded.
Yeah.
Right. Mr. Sandy.
So many residents mentioned to me that Lexington doesn't have a fast food, typical fast food like McDonald's or Burger King sort of thing. And I'm wondering, is that because of the definition as it currently exists? Is that why this is the case?
We think a lot of it also has to do with that we prohibit drive-throughs. And usually, those establishments like drive-throughs are a major source of business. So that remains today that we prohibit drive-throughs in all zoning districts in town.
So the other thing I'm thinking about, sort of fast food that used to be in the center is Panera. And so how, how did, how did Panera get permitted? And, you know, so it seems to me to be something that wouldn't qualify under our current definition of restaurant. So I'm kind of wondering what's, whether that was prohibited and whether there was some way for a Panera, you know, a similar restaurant like Panera to current, without changing this, this definition for them to come into the center.
I don't remember how Panera got in originally, if there's anyone else on the call that knows. But I know with this, with this zoning change, we think a Panera coming in now would be considered a restaurant with this definition.
So Mr. Malloy was suggesting it couldn't be considered a bakery. Mr. Lucetti, you wanted to follow up?
Oh, I have a new question.
Okay, so just let's finish this one. Mrs. Tag, are you on this one? Please.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about the, the mail, the private mail service. Because I, when I read that, I pictured like the UPS store that's on Waltham Street. And I'm not convinced with all the work, and I know we're getting the report in another couple of weeks, but with all the work that we did on the center, whether that's the type of business that we're really looking to encourage in the center business district.
I felt the same way, and I was a little hesitant at first, but then I realized we have a definition in our, in our zoning bylaw for exactly that. Hold on, let me find it. Private, private postal services. And it says a retail use, which includes private postal box rentals and mailing services. Such facilities shall not be used as a distribution center, parcel delivery, or commercial mail delivery center, but shall remain as a retail convenience store for consumers. So I think that's clear that it's an accessory use within a retail use.
I guess I would still argue that the UPS store would fall within that. It's not technically a distribution, it's a mailing location, and you can also get a box there. And I just, I'm not sure that I love that in the center business district. And then the only other thing I was gonna say, and I apologize, but on page twenty-one in your summary of Article twenty-nine, you got the wrong compliment. You need an E, not an I in the middle there.
Okay, thank you.
Although I'm sure it's being very nice.
Mr. Lucetti.
Yeah, the center committee was pretty adamantly in favor of allowing this, just because the, this, the current limits don't make sense the way some shopping happens. And they had, they had some good arguments. I don't, I don't, I'll let them make them directly. Could you define or help me understand the definition of takeout fast-food service as it relates to? Some takeout places have seats in them. But is there, and I apologize if I couldn't find this, but are there a seat limit for a fast, or a takeout food? Or is it zero seats? And I ask this just because some of the takeout locations that are currently in town, that we, I think of as takeout, there's a couple of places to sit.
I'm looking at our zoning bylaw. The definition says it doesn't have a limit on number of seats. It's, it's for takeout food service. It says, "An establishment primarily for dispensing food or beverages to persons carrying the food away for consumption elsewhere." So it doesn't mention our requirement on the number of seats.
So the Panera, Panera question earlier, that, could that have been considered a takeout today? Where people are, you know, is it the majority of the people are taking the food to go versus a staying and eating it?
Well, because they do have seats, you know, for consumption on premises, so I'm not, I can find out how it was permitted originally.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm just trying to understand that, what, what something would fall on if, you know, if they have a, a table and chair. You know, they have a takeout counter and a table, one table and chair, is that gonna be takeout still? But it sounds like it would be, if that's the primary. Okay, thank you.
If I can follow up on primary, when I think about this, I think about enforcement. And if, if the word is primarily, and then that can change over time. If, you know, a, a year from now, they're doing fifty-one percent takeout and, and today, they're doing forty-nine percent takeout and one's primarily. And then you have a definition that's changing over time. I, I'd much rather see something that is easily enforceable and something that you can measure as opposed to having to do traffic studies in a restaurant.
Ms. Ayer, do you have a, a commentary?
Thank you, Mr. Pato. So I just wanted to let people know that seating is generally not determined just by the zoning. It is also determined by the restrooms, accessible restrooms that are available in the rest, in the restaurant, as well as there are other limitations as far as health goes. So, you know, Board of Health also determines the number of seating. So this is just one layer of thing that, that goes on into how many seats are available in a restaurant. And as far as the question about Panera, most of the restaurants, like even Fiorella's or Omar's Bistro right now in the center, have, are, are a, are a food service that are not defined as fast food or not defined as a restaurant, which makes it more and more saying that, you know, the definition, the more we try to define a restaurant, the more different types of restaurants are limited that are coming into, into Lexington. And we really want to expand the definition as much as possible to make sure that we, we can attract more restaurants to Lexington.
Thank you, Ms. Ayer. So I think Mr. Lucetti, Mr. Sandy, you were, you, you're questioning the, the preciseness of the language. And I think that's input to the planning board to come back to us. Because I think Ms. Ayer is absolutely right about, we're looking to try to create a climate that encourages a wider range of dynamic outfit, outlets. But I'm not sure that, all we're trying to do right now is say, let's make sure we're reading this correctly and that the language is clear.
And, and, and I would add to Mr. Pato's comments. When I think about this, I think about it as certainty for the people who are building the business as well as, as for the town who is having to enforce the regulations. If we have something that's certain, it's easy and people can feel more confident that what they're proposing is going to be acceptable if there's some certainty in the language.
Sorry, we just had a technical difficulty and I'm sharing nicely. Okay. Any other questions on this one? Seeing none, we'll move to the next.
Article fifty amends the inclusionary housing section of the newly adopted village and multifamily overlay districts. So if you can remember back from a year ago or the last, yeah, about a year and a half ago, the state's compliance guidelines for MBTA communities. They, in their guidelines, they have a requirement that limits municipalities in their zoning can require a maximum of ten percent of any multifamily development that comes before them, a maximum of ten percent of the units that can be inclusionary. Inclusionary are typically called, you know, referenced, or, you know, many people call them the affordable units. They're the ones that are income restricted to certain, people making certain incomes. And there's limits on how much they can be rented and sold for. There is also a provision that towns in their zoning, they can require more than ten percent, but never more than twenty percent if there's an approved economic feasibility study that analyzes the zoning and local conditions performed by an outside consultant that essentially confirms to the state that the town zoning requirements isn't too prohibitive, that it would make the construction of new housing infeasible. And the goal, you know, the, the reasoning behind that requirement is the state, you know, was afraid that if communities had too strict requirements, if they were too high on the affordable units, then you, no new housing would be created. So that's why they had this requirement for the feasibility study. Next slide. In the zoning that was adopted by annual town meeting last year in two thousand and twenty-three, our zoning said projects with eight or more dwelling units had to have fifteen percent of the total units to be inclusionary. At that time, you know, we had a feasibility study that done, and the consultant had said that, that worked for Lexington zoning. However, later in the year, at the end of November, early December, we did hear from the state that our zoning was in compliance, but they did not fully approve our fifteen percent requirement. They questioned the smaller project sizes, specifically the eight units, starting at eight units. They did not approve us starting at the eight units. So once we got that letter, we commissioned a new consult, the, the same consultant to update their findings, review the zoning, and provided, they provided an updated supplemental study that took a more closer look at the eight units, looking at apartments and condos. And that study came back to us in January and told us that eight is not, no longer feasible. So they didn't recommend requiring the fifteen percent until we got to fourteen units. So essentially, the study said if we have twelve, you need at least twelve market rate units to help offset the cost for the inclusionary units. So this zoning article amendment, this change is kind of where we start that requirement by saying projects with ten to thirteen are required to provide one inclusionary unit. And then fourteen or more always have to do fifteen percent rounded down. So if we just go to the next slide, just kind of shows the breakdown, just examples of fifteen percent, what that would mean. The remaining are always the market rate units. We maintain the requirement that all the inclusion areas listed on our town's SHI. And that's just a breakdown of what eighty percent area median income, that was also a requirement of the state law that we couldn't require lower than eighty percent of the median income. And that just shows that ranges from household size. Next slide, please. So essentially, Article fifty, we believe this is the most that we can do since the state did not approve what we had adopted last year for the smaller projects. We want to always require more than ten percent so that, that helps us stay ahead of our ten percent requirement so that we can maintain safe harbor from any unfriendly fortyBs. And we believe this is, you know, the maximum we can do with the zoning to help us provide some more below-market housing integrated into new projects throughout town.
Colleagues, comments? Mr. Sandy?
So I, I appreciate the effort to raise the rates if I'm doing the math quickly here, though it gets awfully close back to ten percent. So like if you're doing fourteen to nineteen, if you do nineteen, two out of nineteen is ten point five percent. So it's sort of, you know, it's getting very close to exactly where we are right now. And, and thirteen units, if we do one inclusionary with thirteen units, it's seven and a half percent. So we're not even getting to ten percent. So I, I'm, you're saying you think this is the best we can do? How, how, is there, is there some way that we can get closer to fifteen percent in actuality for these larger areas as opposed to sort of doing this rounding down thing and, and, and rates? I'm, I'm, I appreciate where you're trying to go. I'm just wondering whether we're actually getting anything meaningful by doing this change.
We did also submit this to the state for, you know, hoping for their input before town meeting for pre-approval. We don't have that back yet. We can take back to the board, I guess, another change would be the, you know, maybe not rounding down in all cases. We, you know, one thing we could take to the board would be if it's, you know, point five, that's rounded down. And if it's over point five, rounded up.
I, I appreciate where you're going, and I, I do think we need to figure out ways to do more than one in ten. But, you know, this is, you know, it's, ten point five percent is not that much more than ten.
I, I just want to say that we are held to what the state allows us. And, and that's really what we're up against here. I mean, we went to the trouble of getting the study done and we're held to what that study, what comes out of that study. And, and of course, everything that you're suggesting is, is what we want. We, we want more. We absolutely want more. But to Ms. McCabe's point, if we get no housing at all, we failed. So we need to get something. And we can certainly look at, you know, options where we might be able to, you know, manipulate those numbers just a little bit to try to get that little boost. But ultimately, the goal is more housing. So if we need to be a little bit below ten in some of these, and then we get some big So if we need to be a little bit below ten in some of these and then we get some bigger units where we solidly have our fifteen. Um, then that's a net win for the town and the state.
And and can you remind me what happens below ten?
Um, under town, we can't require any um inclusionary units. So that was something, that's what the state had questioned and did not approve. So um, you know, they looked at our study very carefully um of the last, you know, last year when we submitted it. We had tried to do uh more and that's why we had tried to start at the eight units, but the state did not approve that.
Thank you. And I I just want to, I I've gotten a number of questions from residents and they were concerned that. A developer could not put more than ten percent in or whatever our minimum was, but that's not the issue. The issue is we can't zone requiring more, but if a developer had a project that where they wanted to put in more, by all means.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Lucente.
I guess this is the unfortunate part of, you know, I think when we voted on this at town meeting. I think this was one of the selling points was the inclusionary housing. So, yeah, fifteen percent, so it's a little disappointing, I think, for folks that may have supported this for that purpose. And now we're finding out, well, it's more market rate housing than we thought. But, um, you know, and I'm also sitting here thinking, how are people now? It seems like there's a little bit more opportunity to work the system a little, so I'm just trying to think through what are the workarounds that. Um, and again, I I I hear what you're saying, um, Mr. Schaubacher about the. We're not, we don't have full control over this. Uh, we've adopted it and. I think it just, it definitely changes the purpose and reason for some folks, I'm sure, about, you know, should we do this or should we not? But anyway, thank you for bringing forward this article.
And also another clarification, um, so the state has said that our our fifteen percent threshold was not in compliance with the act. So does that mean this change now is a majority vote to come into compliance or is it a two-thirds vote zoning change? What's the quorum? What's the quantum?
I guess that's a question for town council, but I I would think it might. Be simple majority because it is still a housing. It's still housing, it's still by site plan review by right in um multifamily and mixed use districts. But we can double check that. And if I could just add, you know, the real, the real change is, the only change with this article is when we start requiring the fifteen percent. So it's still the same article as last year, except for starting at fourteen units rather than the ten unit. The eight units that we adopted last year. And only because, we're only bringing this forward because the state um didn't approve it.
Seeing no other movement toward questions off the table, let's go to the next item.
Okay, Article fifty is an amendment um to the village overlay district. Um, it's about the maximum height, what we commonly have been referring to as the height bonus. Um, this, this article does not amend the maximum height in any way. But um, we think this amendment will help clarify the original intent of the zoning. In the maximum heights that were allowed in the height bonus if you did mac mixed use um last year. Um, so we're just um with this article updating the little asterix um in the zoning. The existing language is up on the screen. Over the last few months, now that we've talked to some, you know, prospective applicants and some property owners. Over the last couple of months, they had some questions on some of the ambiguous terms. Um, they had different interpretations, so we want to make these amendments now um so that it was really clear for anyone going forward. If we could go to the um next slide, just a quick summary, the village overlay is, there are seven areas of town. They're shown in blue on the map, they're um, you know, some areas on Bedford Street, Mass Ave, East Lexington. Um, Merritt, Merritt Road, South Lexington. Next slide. So this um, this chart that's in the zoning bylaw now, it says the maximum height in the village overlay. If it's a fully residential project, forty feet is the existing house um height limit. Um, if you're going to do mixed use, then there's a little asterix that says in the village overlay. If you're also adding um a commercial component, you can go above that forty, um, the forty feet in height. And what this article is doing, it's not changing the height in any way, but it's clarifying that the maximum height is based on the underlying zoning district. It's based on how much commercial square footage of application proposes. And when, when you're eligible for that additional height over the forty feet. Next slide, please. So our current zoning, um, kind of how you can visualize this on your left, the current zoning says. If the non-residential uses are not permitted in the underlying district, you can go up to fifty-two feet if you're proposing a project. If you, if the non-residential uses are permitted in the underlying district, you can go up to sixty feet in height. Now, since we had some questions on when you can get to fifty-two or sixty, we're proposing um. Language instead of saying underlying district, we say if the underlying zoning district is residential, you can go up to fifty-two feet in height. If the underlying district is commercial, you can go up to sixty feet in height. Next slide, please. And then this article also um changes the eligibility of the height bonus. Um, the existing zoning shown in the chart on the left, it says where at least if a project proposes. Where at least thirty percent of the total net floor area of the street floor of a development is occupied by non-residential uses. That's when you get the additional height over the forty feet. But this article changes to gross floor area rather than net floor area. Um, of having to provide the thirty percent of the gross floor area rather than net floor area. If we can go to the next slide to help demonstrate. Since this, you know, after talking to applicants, we realized the gross floor area was a better approach. Because net floor area excludes um parking, parking garages or podium style parking. Also excludes things like hot common areas, hallways, elevators. Um, so the same building, you know, a structure, um, if there's the same size, the image on the left right now. If it's based on net floor area, you would only have to provide that front part of the building, one thousand square feet of. Commercial because it's only thirty percent of that front occupiable space. It would exclude that whole parking area. So the image on the right is based on this article's change to require it be based on gross floor area. So that with the same footprint of the building, three thousand square feet would be required to be commercial. So the back portion could be parking, um, but the planning board and staff. With this, over the last couple of months, thought this was a better approach to obtain the um. More substantial commercial uses that we're looking for. And then next slide is just, um, this is an example, what we think what we are trying to do. Um, with this change is we wanted to have more substantial commercial use on the first floor with housing above. So we think the change to gross floor area will require applicants to provide more commercial uses on that ground floor. And then the third action in this article, it removes that slightly ambiguous term, non-residential principal uses. And says commercial principal uses. And then we list out the sections in the table of uses that we want to see. That an applicant would have to provide as part of their project to be able to go above the forty feet. So rest restaurant uses, retail, personal services, commercial offices, recreation and entertainment. Um, and so essentially, we think this article um strengthens and clarifies the vision for the mixed use. That we um, we proposed last year in that town meeting adopted. We think that this will help be a, create a more vibrant public realm, provide, will help prevent. Provide more substantial commercial uses and help create more um walkable neighborhoods. By requiring more of the commercial uses that we're looking for on that first floor. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. McCabe. I I'd say that the intent of what we passed last year is this. And that we may have misused ambiguous terms, as you said. Uh, so I am very appreciative to see this come forward. Ms. Lucente.
Not to get nitpicky or in the weeds, but in the example you showed on slide, page thirty-one, I believe. Um, with the sixty foot by one hundred and fifty foot building, which is nine thousand square feet. We have a third of it is listed as commercial versus twenty-seven hundred square. If you wouldn't, it'd be twenty-seven hundred square feet would be required of the gross or my misunderstanding something. Because thirty percent of nine thousand square feet would be twenty-seven hundred.
Oh, yes.
And you have three thousand here. I just, if using it as an example, I'd hate to have it. Someone in our town meeting will bring that up.
Okay, thank you.
Guaranteed. Thank you.
Any other comments, Mr. Sandin?
Yes, I I I appreciate what Mr. Paddell was saying about. You know, we, it looks like what you're suggesting on slide twenty-nine. That what we're doing is removing double negatives from the, from the language and I'm just wondering. Is that really all that's going on is we're just removing double negatives or does non-residential? Have a meaning different than commercial in our current zoning?
Well, the the question that, you know, came up was if there's a use, for example, a Dover use such as. Um, a church, would that be allowed up? In the underlying zoning district and therefore what height would be allowed? So a church is a non-residential use, but it's not clearly called out um in our, our zoning. So that was the question that was raised over the last couple of months, so um.
So what I'm hearing is it's not quite the same as just removing a double negative. That there's other implications to this other than removing a double negative.
It's clarification. The intent was always commercial. Um, but it was, it was expressed using these no double negatives. And there is some potential question. This removes potential questions.
Well, at least for me, um, I might be helpful to have some example of what we're actually trying to accomplish. You know, because I think there's something slightly different than just removing the double negative going on here. If I'm understanding you correctly, that there's things that aren't considered commercial, that aren't considered residential. And so, so we, in our current zoning and and that is where my mind is going. What happens to those uses that aren't considered either residential or commercial?
Anything else? And let's move to fifty-two.
So this Article fifty-two, the last article is um a technical correction. It really um updates the state um department name um changed this last year. So this article um references updating the new State Department of Housing in Livable Communities. Replacing the old um department name everywhere in the zoning bylaw where it's referenced now.
This uh, it's not on consent, is it? Seems like it could be.
I believe it's the two-thirds vote, so we.
Too bad. All right, uh, I I don't think the board has any questions about this. Thank you very much for uh um putting up with our questions. And we wish you well on closing the hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And in particular, thank you about the signs. We've been hearing about that from our business owners for so long. Thank you.
If if I, if I could just ask about the two warrant articles that aren't on our agenda tonight that you um. You suggested should not be uh, should be IPed, if you can just help me understand what your reasoning was.
Uh, yes, so uh, we took a a vote on this. So it was uh three, three to one with one recusal for disapproval. Uh, and so the logic that the board had was that the two lots in question are not contiguous with the existing overlay. Um, and thinking about the sort of logic of the overlay districts, the the state required them to be contiguous. This on its own would not have qualified. Uh, that doesn't necessarily mean that the lots were not viable. Uh, they also did not include um Nine Winter Street, so there was that little corner piece that was not included as well. So the board um did feel that, you know, wanted to have, uh, encourage a discussion with the owner of uh Nine Winter Street. Um, and did not feel like, because it was not contiguous, did not feel like it was a good addition.
So if if in the future, other residents came forward with things that were contiguous, you might look favorably upon that. Is that what I'm hearing?
I I would not speak for the entire board, but I can speak for myself and I would say that I would think of that as a more viable uh solution.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Oxtel. Well, come to you for the discussion on consent.
Yes, thank you. First, I did want to comment that those two articles will be referred to the planning board. They will not be IPed. Yes, um, so just to be clear, because we don't want a negative action. In case the residents want to bring it back sooner than two years. Um, and so with that, we are also talking with the moderator if those can be on consent because they are, we've done that in the past. But we're just getting clarification on that. So with that, the consent agenda is in your packet. I wanted to let you know that the C E C and the A C have approved the consensus agenda as. In your packet with the caveat that, again, Article eighteen, twenty and twenty-two. If they are indeed IPed, they are agreeable to have those on the consent agenda. And I also spoke with um this um CPC. And the three on there are regularly proposed to be on the consent agenda, ten, B, J and K. So I, there's not a motion in here, but um I apologize for that. But I did, I would like the board to take a position on whether I can move this forward.
So my question for the board, is there any item on the consent agenda that you would like to remove? Give you a second to scan. So just to affirm, I'm in favor of all of them. I see Ms. Barry is comfortable with all of them.
I had one, I I was a little less than sure about the parking lot improvements. Um, that was the only one that I was hesitating. Um, and I think that is in.
And I would agree with this.
I would agree with Miss Hay on that one.
So it sounds like we have two members, so well, that's polled.
I've I've heard from some some town meeting members that they are concerned.
It's it's polled.
Good with everything other than twelve J.
All right, good. We're all set.
Are you okay with adding the two refer back? Because that was not on your, that was after um this was in.
So that's, I see yes is going across the board.
Good, thank you. Uh, next up, I also wanted to mention next week, the last planned presentation is Article forty-one. The MBTA is supposed to come in in front of you. Um, if there are any other ones that you would like to see, please let me know by Wednesday so that I can. Um, approach you've seen several of them before they were brought to town meeting. So if you want to refresh her, just please let me know at this point.
So on nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, do we have any information on those? Is there a prior year or some pay bill to be known?
I don't have that yet.
Okay.
But it's very soon. Those will make sure, if there's not the information yet, you will have those. Yes.
All right, so that brings us to. Um, our positions on our, on items.
Can I ask one other question?
Go ahead, Ms. Barry, while I pull up the. Go ahead, Ms. Barry, while I pull up the.
First, have you forwarded us an email this afternoon about article forty three? Voting, voting rate sixteen and older?
Yes.
Do you want to speak tonight?
I, did you have a specific question? So I spoke after, um, the proponent had presented it. I had asked our town clerk to get some information about, um, the questions that had been asked by the board. So she wanted to provide that to you if you have further questions. I'm not sure if you're asking.
I just wanted to make sure we know that there was that email.
Oh, so yeah, so there was any, I did send an email that came from the town clerk. That also gave the information about our census numbers currently to, I believe it was February fifteenth of sixteen and seventeen year olds. And then her, uh, research in neighboring towns about, um. Often, I think Belmont enacted it, but hasn't, um, actually, I mean, they, it approved, but didn't put it into practice. So there's a lot of information in there that I would encourage everybody to review.
And the complication of seven.
Yes.
Under eighteen and names being released, not being released.
Yes, yes.
All right, so let's, um, take a look at positions. I'm just going to walk them down, see where we have any. So at this point, we've heard from the budget, um, anybody have?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm a yes, three.
Yes.
So send me the yes, that's four. Mr. Sandin?
Yes.
So five across on article four, all yeses.
And can you just make me a son three as well?
All right, and Mr. Sandin is approving the carry lecture series. Uh, number five, which is the enterprise funds budget. I am a yes.
I'm a yes.
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 And Ms. Barry already was, so we're five yeses on that. Uh, the senior service program number six.
I'm a yes.
Mr. Lucente?
Yes.
And Mr. Sandin?
Yes.
The five yeses there. Um, number seven, which is sustainable capital projects, I'm now a yes.
Yes.
Mr. Sandin's a yes.
I'm already a yes.
I'm already a yes.
Uh, where have?
If we, yes.
I'm reading the wrong line, so yes, okay.
Me, Mark and you.
Right, so we're all three, five yeses now. Uh, except Tucker Avenue, westernmost portion, Mr. Sandin?
Yes.
Yes, all five. Number nine, revolving funds.
Yes.
Yes.
Lucente is a yes.
So five yeses. Right, now the next one is article eleven, appropriate for recreation capital.
Mr. Sandin was a wait.
So, oh, no, I have no's.
Oh.
Right, every yes.
Mine was so purple, I'm looking at two of them.
Right, cause we don't have a monitor.
Yeah, you have to look online, yes.
Yeah.
I'm just feeling current.
Okay, all right, so.
So what's the question?
Article eleven, recreation capital projects, I'm now a yes.
I am as well.
Yes.
Yes.
It's five yeses. Okay, article twelve, um, transportation mitigation.
Yes.
And say is a yes, Mr. Lucente and Mr. Sandin are waits so far.
Yes.
Is Sandin a the yes?
I'm, I'm going to be yes on everything except J.
That's helpful, okay, and you're running away on J?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Uh, just to make things easy, I'll, I will be the same.
Very good.
I'll be a wait on.
On J, I will do the same.
Get some clarity around it.
All right, so.
So I will change my G to a yes.
J.
G.
G, yes, so Ms. Barry is changing twelve G to a yes from a wait.
And we'll wait on J.
And she is away on the parking lot, okay. Moving to thirteen, Mr. Sandin, water systems.
Yes.
And fourteen.
Fourteen, yes.
Right, fifteen, appropriate for school capital projects and equipment, I'm a yes.
Yes.
I'm a yes.
I guess.
All right, five yeses across. Moving to sixteen, um. This is public facilities capital.
Yes, on all of them.
Okay, and Mr. Lucente?
Uh, yes, on, yep, uh, yeah, cause I was a wait on all my yes on.
All right, so it's five yeses for all of sixteen. Seventeen, appropriate, uh, O P E D is now on consent.
Makes it easy.
So we're all yeses.
Oh, cause it's a recusal, oh, but it'll.
Pull the notices.
I'll, I'll be a yes on it.
Sure, I'm a yes on it.
Right.
We're all yeses, but we were.
We were comfortable with it on consent.
Prior bo, borrowing authorization.
Be a yes on it.
Do we know yet? I, we don't know yet.
We don't know yet, but.
So I was just going to wait until we knew.
But I'm a yes, that's always good to rescind.
That's right, free of that borrowing capacity. Nineteen.
That one we don't know yet.
Stabilization funds, and we're still waiting, right? Uh, unpaid bills is we're still waiting, but.
It's on consent.
Yeah.
Either way, right?
Yeah. The same for twenty one is. Amending twenty twenty four budgets, we, we still don't know, right? Okay, so we'll wait on that. Twenty two is authorized capital improvements. And I just don't remember what's in here, so I'm, I'm a wait, yeah. Pine Meadows Clubhouse, which is twenty five.
Twenty three, I'm a yes.
You already are a yes.
I was already.
Okay. Twenty five, I'm going to remain a wait, just to, I haven't had a chance to look at it. And anybody else, we have four waits.
Yeah, I don't think I've read it yet.
I'm still waiting.
Okay.
I'll stay away.
Is there anything you need, uh, since I'm a recreational user?
Time.
Time.
I'm just, I'm just, is there anything you need, let us know, other than time?
If you can mint it, it would be great. Um, twenty seven, we heard tonight appropriating for renovation. I think we were all yeses on going to the full six million.
Yes, yes.
So it's yeses across the board. Article twenty eight easements is on consent.
Yes.
But it's yes across the board, okay.
So ju, just to be clear, that's because we were three weights currently, so that everyone's a yes on that now.
That's right.
All right.
All right, now twenty nine, uh, noise control in two parts. A is construction noise. There are four waits.
I, I think I'm going to end up waiting until like your town meeting debate.
A wait on A and a yes on B.
And I'm going to be a no on B.
Any other changes?
I'm standing a wait on both.
Okay. And now.
Should we still wait on B?
I'm still wait on B, I'm not trying to get. Uh, thirty one, single serve plastic water bottles.
We heard that last week.
Which we heard last week.
I'm a wait.
So I tend to support this, but the proponent said he would be coming back with some information on outreach. And so I'd like to hear what they say about outreach.
Yes.
Same.
Uh, thirty four, by law, tree by law, tree protection plan is barrier awaits. You're a yes, okay. Thirty five, mitigation planting.
Yes.
And Doug, you're a wait.
I'm going to stay away just for, I just need to reread it.
And thirty six, which is.
Yes.
Ms. Barry is now a yes, okay, across the board. And thirty seven is the importantest tree resolution, Ms. Barry is a now a yes.
I, thirty seven, I will be a. I want, I want to just do one more check, so I'll start reading.
I'm at the moment still a wait because I haven't heard the resolution from the question about impact on staffing.
Yes.
Uh, you should be receiving a, a response from the proponent on that. On what they expect. The, um, thirty eight.
Yes.
So Ms. Barry is a yes, Mr. Lucente, you're a wait.
A yes on that.
Okay, so you're a yes, across the board. Thirty nine, Mr. Sandin?
Yes.
You're now a yes, good. Uh, forty one, where we haven't heard yet, forty two. Uh, the next one is forty five.
So I have a meeting with the proponent of that next week, so. And I, well, I won't get into my concerns, but I'll address later.
Forty six, royal family, I remain a wait.
I am going to, I remain a wait until town meeting discussion.
Yeah, actually, it will be until town meeting as well.
Can we, um, change the presentation to Mr. Lucente?
Uh, sure.
And, and I'm going to stay away down the zoning articles.
Can we just go back to forty three for a second?
Uh, go ahead.
I want to go to a wait to read and consider the information from Ms. Jill already.
So Ms. Barry is now a wait on forty three.
Actually, that's a fair point, if there's no information today that we didn't have, I would like to read that as well.
Right, I have read it, I will remain a yes.
I'll stay a yes.
All right.
I don't know if I was a yes, but I am a yes.
You, you were at our. And zoning, does anybody want to take a position tonight?
No, not me, I need to think about these things.
Move on to fifty two.
Yeah, I was definitely a yes on fifty two. And.
I'm a yes on forty eight, forty nine, fifty.
And I, Ms. Barry is a yes on forty eight, forty nine and fifty.
And a wait on fifty one. And a yes on fifty two, fifty three and fifty four.
Right, so I am a yes on fifty one and fifty two. And fifty.
Just a, a reminder, fifty three and fifty four will be updated to, with the words refer back to planning board. And they'll be R Bs.
Right, and they'll be on, and they'll all be on consent. And they're, I think the board is yes across the board if they're pulled from consent, yes.
And I'm a wait on forty seven.
I am a wait on forty seven and I am a yes on the others.
Any other?
So I may wait on forty seven. And a wait on, gosh, forty, uh, sorry, fifty. And the yes, yes on all the others.
Okay, um, we'll be back at this, at our next meeting. And so we've taken votes at town meeting, we'll keep making sure we have positions.
Okay, so.
And this.
I will say yes on fifty two, I, I was missing that, it was just technical.
Yeah, it was the change of the name of the agency. And Ms. Oxtel, do you need any more information on Ian? Okay. Ms. Barry?
When is the moderators meeting?
Moderators meeting is on the fifth, Wednes, uh, Tuesday.
Tuesday, the fifth. If possible, can we try to do both of the two fiftieth articles closer to Patriots Day?
I'll mark it on my notes.
Would appreciate that.
Posted a page.
The pa, the, uh, the before the Patriots Day break.
Yeah.
I'll add it to my list for the moderator.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on? Town meeting?
That's Ms. Barry's role, we don't do anything useful.
That's your.
All right, uh, so we'll now move on to, uh, I am number five, which is an amendment to the M O U between A B Holdings LLC and the town of Lexington. This is the memo of understanding that we have, um, renegotiated before our special town meeting. But didn't sign or, or ratify because we were waiting for the attorney general to approve the changes. Those have been approved, so, uh, we now have an unchanged M O U from what we have previously agreed to. Does the board have any questions or discussion? Or are you ready to go ahead and formally approve it? I see shaking heads, so I'm going to move to approve the first amendment to the M O U between A B Holdings LLC in at Hastings Park. And the town of Lexington has negotiated and attached to the packet. Ms. Barry?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, any opposed? Say nay, none, it's unanimous, five zero. All right, it's ten o'clock. We have one more thing ahead of us, which is, um. Uh, revisions to the noise committee charge, which we discussed a couple of weeks ago. There were a few comments primarily from Mr. Sandin about some clarification. To be clear, that we're not requiring each member to have the skillset, but the skillsets applied across the board. There's a few other language changes throughout, but the intent is unchanged in my eyes. If the board would like to, more time than we will have tonight to discuss, we'll push it forward. If you are, feel like you have read it in your homework and we can approve it, I will bring a motion forward.
So I read it in my homework, but I'm fading fast. I'm not sure this is going to, I don't know if we can do this as a quick discussion, yes? It's going to be a prolonged discussion, prefer to move it.
I don't have anything to discuss.
Yeah, I have, uh, I'm satisfied with the changes, having worked on them based on our meeting and with Mr. Sandin to get the wording. But, but it's late, so if you're uncomfortable, we can push.
I thought you captured what we discussed.
I'm, I'm fine with going ahead, because I think we've, we've had three or four bites of this apple. Although it is late, I think we're, this is a work that we've been working on a while, so I can feel safe about it.
Very good.
And then we can start the recruitment process.
That's exactly what I'm hoping to do. So let me move to approve the revised noise advisory committee charge.